Good morning, everybody. It's October 6, 2020. I hereby call to meeting, or call to order, the meeting of Story County Board Supervisors. I'll give a special note to the public. We are originating from our administration building. We're providing public access via Zoom. Instructions on the agenda, how to join the meeting by Zoom or by telephone. And I would ask anybody who's here to join us for the virtual meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. As has been the case for quite a while, we're having a meeting. It's practically impossible for the code to provide public access. I would say that our administration building is open, but we have a limited capacity in our public meeting room of 20. And with the supervisors and staff, we usually come fairly close to that. So that's why we're continuing to encourage the public to zoom in on our calls or on our meetings. Thank you. I would entertain more information for adoption of the agenda. Salute. Second, Headens.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Merkin. Agenda is adopted. Thank you. Next, updates on COVID-19. Do staff have any updates for us today? Okay, if not, are there any updates from the supervisors?
I don't know. I haven't looked to see what the numbers are yet. I think they're, some are coming out at 10, but a lot of things are updated on the state website closer to 11.
Yeah, I looked earlier today, and we're still only low at 3,500 for total positivity. And if you're looking at what are the, what I'm looking at more now on the public health website is looking at the total positive cases versus the recovered since they're taking off in that 30 days. So I would say our last 30 days have been much lower. So we're on a good trend. Let's hope it continues. So, yeah, an update later. Public comment number one, this comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. I'll open that public comment session. Is there anybody in the public with a comment for us today? I'll wait just a few seconds. You see any, anybody? Okay, then I'll close public comment number one. Next is discussion and consideration of items brought before the board with requests for immediate action. Do any staff have any items for immediate action? Okay, seeing and hearing that, I'll go on to item nine, discussion and information regarding Suragordo County, Webster County, and Wright County request to join Central Iowa Community Services, Mental Health and Disability Service Region. Russell Wood and Carla Webb, are you both on the phone? I see you both.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Carla.
Good morning.
Carla, are you steering this up? Or is Russell?
Sure. Actually, I think Russell probably do most of the presentation this morning. He prepared the document that we did put on your agenda today. So as you know, we have received requests from three counties to join the CICS region. We've got Webster County, Wright County, and Suragordo County. So with that, I'll just turn it over to Russell to, if you like, he can walk through his information and then answer any questions you may have.
The first, the first thing I would ask is what information, I know that Lisa has seen this information, but I'm not sure how much that you folks have talked about it. And so I don't want to repeat or go over information that you're comfortable with, but I want to make sure that I provide you with any information you'd like. And I am more than happy to answer questions. So if you would just let me know how you would like to proceed. It's a short document. I can go through the document, or I can go ahead and hit the highlights. I just need to know what your preference is.
We've seen it.
We've seen it. I'd like to make a comment here, Russell. So I just want to say that I felt that this report that you gave was written from the perspective of you want to do this. So like general advantages and disadvantages to adding counties. I didn't see any disadvantages in that list of six. I saw lots of what you perceived advantages. So I just want to let you know that my comments and my questions are going to be based upon here that maybe this isn't a good idea. Okay?
I'm sorry, ma'am. I didn't quite understand what you just said.
I just don't think this is a good idea. So I would like to know, are you in favor of it? Because I sure read like this in this report. I found the report slanted. Slanted.
Well, in, in response to your question, the admin team was in favor of it. So that is what it, what it does say. So if you have questions about the disadvantages to adding, I definitely can discuss that. I did discuss it with the governing board. We've had multiple conversations about it. And you're definitely entitled to say that you are or are not in favor of adding counties to the region. What I wanted to do is identify the benefits because it had already had discussion of what the drawbacks would have been if we were to add counties to the region. So that is why I concentrated on those positives.
Why don't we do this? May I make a suggestion to the supervisor?
Yes, ma'am.
Let Russell do a quick summary, and maybe you could add in what are the things that we're seeing as the disadvantages and why those didn't overcome the advantages? And then we'll ask our questions. Would that be all right?
That's fine. I'll keep track. Okay.
Okay. All right. Well, the-
Thank you.
So the primary thing that we, we looked at, if we were to add counties to our region, the first thing that we wanted to know is, were we looking at potentially having a financial obligation for the current counties in our region? That would be higher. This county does receive more dollars per capita than it levies, or it receives less dollars per capita than it levies. We have embraced the concept that we are a region. So we do look at the region as a whole. What we did want to do, however, is if we're adding any county, we want to make sure that they're able in coming into the system to pay for whatever expenses they may or may not have coming into the system. So when we looked at the costs of the region, and that's in the, the first page, the counties that are applying to be part of our region, we asked county social services for specific information on expenditures that these folks had made last fiscal year. And in looking at that, they gave us the, a data pull from the Community Services Network, which is the statewide data system that all regions and counties use for their service expenditures. And the first column is their expenditures, not county administration. And the data report that they used, and the same report that we would use, does the data pull based on expenditures that are identified by clients. So it does not, it is not cover any administrative expense. So when we look at it, our region right now is levying $26 per capita. Our maximum levy is $35.50 per capita. So if you look at it from that perspective, what we wanted to do is we wanted to look at, would that region be able to meet its needs? Their gross expenditures, not including administrative expenses on per capita, you can see for Suragordo is $28.57, Webster's $34.92, and Wright is $13.76. Their counties currently are levying $30 per capita. Our counties are currently levying $26 per capita. The next thing that we did is we identified that unlike CICS, county social services still does provide some services. So they provide case management services. They also provide iStart, which is kind of like an ACT program, sort of, for individuals with intellectual disabilities. So that program, they'll send an individual worker in to work with a provider agency with a specific client. But they include those costs in their expenditures and in their budget. As a provider agency, those are incorporated into their last year's expenditures. So we tried to back out those dollars, which then gives you the expenditures for those counties without the iStart dollars in there. And you can see that it did decrease about 10%, give or take, for some of those counties. And then the final thing that we did was backed out all the expenditures of their staff. And the reason that we did that is if the governing board were to vote to add counties to our region, we would want to do an analysis of our current capacity with the staff that we have, and then we would want to do an analysis of what the needs would be of those individual counties. And if those counties had specific needs, then that's when we would develop the staffing that we would need for those counties. And I know that at our last meeting, Supervisor Headens had asked about what we were potentially thinking and could we get response to what we were looking at there. My response to that was, at this point in time, we don't have that level of information because this is a different region and we don't have information about whose clients are doing what and where they're at and how they're structuring their coverage for service coordination or what they're doing for claims processing in their administrative office, et cetera. So we don't have that information. The next page, what I did is I just looked at currently what our current levies are, and you can see by county what our population is and our current levy, and that would be that $26. And then the max levy would be the $35.50. So what would it look like if we did have those counties join? And if they would have actually expended or had the ability to expend the dollars, what would it look like? And then you can, if you just scroll up a little bit on your document, you can see where you were, what they were financially, what their expenditures were. So for instance, Wright County, if they were at the current levy of $26, they could have generated $326,000, and last year they spent $172,000. Suragordo would have been 1.1 million gross. Last year they spent 1.2. And Webster would have been 933,000 gross. Last year they spent 1.25. Now, keep in mind, the expenditures they spent last year did not include administration. So those don't include, like Carla's time or your office time, those sorts of things are not included in those expenditures. So I don't know if you have questions about numbers. That's the expenditures. So it's up to you if you want to talk about the expenditure dollars first, and then we can go to population.
Yes. Lisa, is that one? And then I'll ask.
I want to just make sure that I understood, Russell. I guess this is the question I asked at our governing board meeting. So the three counties, Suragordo, Webster, and Wright, are they all three levying at that $30 right now that you said?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. County Social Services, like us, has set a standard levy, and all of their counties are levying at the same amount. So they are all levying at $30.
Okay. Okay. We're levying, our region is levying at 26.
Yes, ma'am.
And what was the Wright County expenditure? I've got a hard copy, and it wasn't, it said it wasn't available at the time.
I'm sorry. The, the one that your staff loaded, Linda, has the updated information with Wright County. I can give you those numbers across the board if you'd like to write them down so that you have them to look at. But their, their gross expenditures, the first column would have been 172,870. Their population is 12,562. So that gives a per capita of $13.76.
Russell?
Yes, ma'am. You have it? Okay.
My question goes back to, you said that despite these numbers, and you stripped them down, you don't know about what kind of cost would be involved just for staff? Now, that's public record. So why don't we have that? Why don't we know that now? You're giving us these nice numbers, but we have no idea exactly what kind of staff needs would be required to-
Right.
To be accurate. I don't know how I, as a responsible supervisor, make a vote or make a recommendation to Lisa Headens to make a vote. When I don't know something so specific as every detail about what services are moving over and how that might impact the decision on a vote. I just don't get it, Russell.
Okay. So let me explain it to you so that you can. So the reason I'm telling you that we don't know what the staff costs are is because they staff differently than we do. So we don't know whether or not we need two office people or one office person because they have people that are processing claims that might be according to their provider agency, or they might be processing claims that would be for their region. So we don't have that level of information without going into their internal structure and how they're, they're populated. We also would look at what is our current capacity. So for instance, in Webster County, if we had the ability to use service coordination or part of service coordination time from one of our counties to help cover there, that would potentially reduce the cost of staff. But until we do an analysis of the number of clients that we're working with and what the need would be, then we don't have an answer for that.
That's my point. You need to do this analysis before asking your governing board to vote. That's my point, Russell. Why don't you have this? They want to, they are asking us to, on good faith, basically, make a recommendation to our voting supervisor to take it back to the Board of Governors. You should have all this information before asking this, and they should be providing it. That's my point, Russell. Okay? That, I think this is premature. And I know I can't support something where I have no idea what I'm taking on. I wouldn't buy a car that way. I wouldn't buy a house that way. And I certainly don't think that we should be obligating our taxpayers to take on three additional counties without knowing what we're really getting into. Russell, could you explain just briefly why you don't think that's a concern for us?
The reason is because what we have looked at is if we staff the same way that we're staffing now, then we would be looking at one office person per county, and we would be looking at potentially one service coordinator in Wright County, potentially two in Suragordo or two in Webster, depending on their need. But looking at the potential capacity we have in our region, then doing a cursory analysis, it does not appear that we would have that expense. So if we look at the gross, potential gross expense on an office person, administrative person, if you throw in salary, FICA, IFRS, insurance, you're probably talking around $80,000 a year. If you look at, that actually, that might be a service coordinator, I'm sorry. And then if you look at a staff person for an office, you could be looking at about $10,000 to $15,000 less. So then if you look at those numbers and we add those numbers in, it still keeps us below their levy capacity. Once again, that's not counting necessarily the potential capacity we have internally. Betsy and I, Betsy Sturzma is our finance officer, and I don't know if she's on today. She had said she might try. But we did look at the financial position that our region is in ongoing and what we're potentially going to come back to the governing board and recommend for a levy. And adding these counties to our region, we did not feel at, looking at things from a cursory perspective, that they would bring an additional expense to the counties in our region.
That even with their levy going down to our $26 from their $30?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So what I hear you saying is that you're already seeing some potential savings in how those counties would be staffed and that that decision is really a decision that the CICS board would be making in the future if these counties come with, not the individual counties. They understand that.
Right. And this, once again, the administrative team would make a recommendation to the governing board on staffing patterns, and the governing board would decide on how they're moving forward. We've already had conversation with each one of the counties in answering the second part of your question to inform them and let them know that it would be a decision. Our region currently has MOUs with each county. So we identify with each county's staff what their needs are. We go back to the governing board, and the governing board votes to approve. So FTE status, and I'm trying to remember, I think Carla is 85 or 75% in the region. And so when we did the MOU with Story County for Carla's time, it identified that percentage of the time in the MOU.
What would happen? Let me follow up on that. It's later in my questions, but I'll ask it since you brought it up. What happens with Carla's time? You know, is she going to be spending more time devoted with three, you know, to CICS, given that there are three additional counties? Because that impacts us. She's already, you know, as far as, she's also serving as a director of our community services. So if she's going to give even more time to CICS because of three additional counties, there's some discussions that have to be had internally here in Story County about community services.
This is Carla. And Laura, you are correct. I mean, I do think that it would increase my workload towards CICS. And so we, I would anticipate we would need to have some conversations on what does that look like within our office and within the, the structure and coverage for general assistance and those kinds of things. So I would anticipate that it is going to reduce my ability to focus on some of the other areas that I currently cover.
Okay. Thanks, Ellen.
You bet.
Russell, I have another question, if that's all right.
Yes, ma'am.
Correct. I believe it was legislation line that was breaking up the CSS region because it is too large, if I am correct on that. Or at least it was a directive from the Department of Human Services, at least. So they would have the opportunity, Department of Human Services, you could either voluntarily look to join another county, or the director, the DHS director, could say these are the counties that are joining here or there. Is that correct?
Right. So the legislature did last year in the appropriations bill have part of their conversation or their edict to the department was to divide up county social services. They didn't say how, they didn't say where the dividing line was, they didn't say what counties went where. But it was put upon the department to try to facilitate a voluntary move for whichever counties felt that they wanted to move to contiguous regions, or those counties could have formed a new region on their own. They did originally try to form a new region, but they were unable to do that. And so there are counties that have applied to be part of county social, or excuse me, Central Iowa Community Services. There are counties that have applied to be part of Northwest Iowa Care Connections. There are counties that have applied to be part of Rolling Hills. And there is one county that is applying to be part of Sioux Rivers. If our region votes no, and we don't accept any of these counties, then the department has until February to decide what to do with these counties. They could decide to appoint them to a different contiguous region, or they could decide to appoint them to us. The legislature did say that they have to divide up the region. I know that the people have said it's because it's too large. That wasn't specifically identified. There has been a lot of, I'm trying to think of the word, turmoil in that region with some of the counties wanting to leave. There have been three counties that have left already, and there are other counties that would like to leave. And so the legislature, I believe, last year passed legislation to do this. Two years ago, we had a different county, actually with Suragordo. It's one of these that applied but withdrew their application to join. So the impetus to this was that the legislature did say that the department needed to do this. We did not reach out to any of these counties. The counties reached out to us and, us and applied to join our region.
Russell, what I, this is Linda again. What I'm hearing is that it's not necessarily that CSS was too large, it just wasn't working for, in terms of some other factors, correct?
I think what has been expressed to us by the counties was two things that they were pretty clear on. Number one was they felt that their, the level of transparency and communication wasn't what they would like it to be. So when they asked for information, they did not necessarily get that information or it wasn't forthcoming quickly. The second issue had to do with service development. In our region, before I was the CEO, I was the developed planning officer and did look at community development and provider development. We have structured our region so that we have service provision across the region, and we've developed a lot of services across the region. In county social services, they have spent a lot of development in a facility that is in Waterloo. It is a great resource. Central Iowa Community Services also uses that resource. But the feeling of some of the counties in the western side of that region felt that it was a long way to drive to get some of the services that they would like and did not feel that service development had occurred necessarily in their part of the region. So those are the two things that have been expressed directly to us. I do know that there were some personality issues between the former CEO of that region and some of the supervisors. And so in our conversation, every conversation I've had with those particular boards of supervisors, I have encouraged them to consider what they want for the future and make their decisions based on that, not based on what may have occurred in the past, especially considering that they have a new CEO that started yesterday. So based on that discussion, they also then, I believe it was Doug Bailey at our last meeting, he also brought up that he would prefer if the supervisor from Webster and the supervisor from Suragordo were not the appointees to our region because they were two of them that he felt might have been part of the chaos that was in the county social services region. And they did both agree to that.
I'm looking at your map, and if the color coding is still as it was, I assume this light purple area is CSS. And that Hancock, Confort, Okeahanas, and Emmett are the counties that have been seeking to go elsewhere?
Right. So Linda, Emmett County up in the north, will, they have applied to go with the Tan counties, and that would be the Sioux Rivers region. That's Emmett. Hancock has applied to go with the pink counties, and that is Northwest Iowa Care Connections. Okeahanas and Humboldt have applied to go with the yellow counties, and that is Rolling Hills. And then Suragordo, Wright, and Webster have applied to go with Central Iowa Community Services.
And the reason I was asking is I wondered if some of those other counties, if they're already look, if they were looking elsewhere, or they might be in addition eventually coming to us, but it's like they're thinking more there, those are the areas they want to be with.
Yep. My understanding is they formally applied all those counties to those other regions.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but when we took green on a year or so ago, year and a half ago, that made us 11 county regions.
Yes, ma'am.
So this is to, that's why I was concerned about whether there was a size limitation that the legislature looked at.
Right.
It would be a lot more of a compact, it would be a large, but what I would consider a fairly compact region.
Right. And I think that's one of the things, too, when you look at the size of our region, we're also, like you said, we're in the center, so we're, we're more central. Where if you look at the way county social services, Worth, Winnebago, and Cassouth, those three pink counties in the north, were also part of county social services, and they're the ones that left July 1st of this year.
Supervisor, that's another question.
Yes, ma'am.
I do, but first of all, I disagree about us in, under this configuration, this proposed one, about us being compact. We would run from Suragordo down to Warren County with a little zip to the right into Jasper to get around Polk. It makes us, just looking at the map, if we are the most geographically spread out county. And I have a concern about that, about, for the delivery of services. Okay? And you know, so I just want to point that out. We actually would be the largest geographically, geographical, area-wise county. We also would be the largest with population with the exception of Polk.
I often wondered why Warren and Madison didn't, you know, with those other regions that were south of Polk, you know, that, that seems to be, you know, that's their choice.
I think the region that they stayed is because initially, before we went to regions, they were part of Boone. It was a tri-county, so it was Boone, Warren, and Madison. And so they were all the state together.
They stayed with Boone. So there's, there's some other really reasons behind that.
Yeah. And they were part of Metro. They wanted to stay with the Metro.
During the time matters on the CICS board, which was not very long, but what I noticed is it seemed to me like all the counties were participating and that there, and it didn't seem like it was, there were any regional things that were tearing people apart at all. So the question is, adding three more counties changes that. I know those counties pretty well because when I was in corrections, I was the Director of Second Judicial District, which sold North Central Iowa, which was 22 counties. And that sounds like a very large district, and it was, but it, it is a pretty similar district in terms of size of communities. And Iowa Southern Health Agency is getting along pretty well in there with corrections and with others. So I, I guess I don't have the concern about the size as long as there aren't other dynamics that are tearing, you know, tearing the, tearing the entity apart. And I don't see them with those counties necessarily.
And I have a question then, kind of related to staff. I know you're thinking, what happened to my outline of going on the report here? But okay, still related to staff. And that has to do with, Russell, you talked about that you weren't sure if there's one or two people in some of these additional counties.
or two people in some of these additional counties who would be, you gave an example of processing claims. And so I want to make sure, is Lisa Markley from Story County, is she in on this call?
Yeah, I am. I'm here.
Okay. So my question's related to you and your role, et cetera, about the financial, given, I don't, we don't know how this other region, these counties work in the other regions, but don't all claims come to you for payment, Lisa?
Yes, they do.
Okay, thank you. So can you, you have any questions you'd like to ask or perspective about your staffing needs that might change or your duties?
Well, quite frankly, at this point in time, um, I feel pretty comfortable with where we're at. We have maybe 40 to 50 checks written every two weeks. Um, the, the heavy load is done by Betsy and Russell. And they're, and they're, uh, the people that enter the claims, it's, it's a really slick process. It dumps into our system, we verify that people, or that everything is a legit, um, claim, and then process it. So, um, it will not, I don't think, impact the workload substantially, uh, maybe a few more claims every, every few weeks, or every two weeks. To, to that extent, uh, that's about all I was, um, that's all, all I thought.
So Laura, just to, to follow up on that, the claims processing, as Lisa pointed out, is something that we do internally. So Betsy has staff that work for her that are otherwise employed by the county members to do office management or reception, and they do the claims processing. So if we added more staff, or if we added more counties, then some of those staff may assist Betsy and her current team in claims processing. But they do everything in-house. Betsy then gets everything wrapped up, she runs it through me, everything gets approved, then it goes to your auditor's office to do the claims. So as Lisa pointed out, the only extra work that should happen would be extra claims and potentially extra revenues that then your auditor's office has to, to, um, look at.
Thanks, that's very helpful. Russell, I've got a question about your population chart.
Yes, ma'am.
You're showing the current regional populations, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
If I'm remembering correctly, Webster, Wright, and Saragordo would have about 90,000 combined population?
Yes, ma'am.
Something like that, 90 to 100.
So if, Linda, if you go to the second page, you'll see that in the current and maximum levies chart, I did go ahead and add in the population, so you'll see where that puts us in the population. That would be right before the maps.
Or 27. Okay, I was thinking about 430. Okay. So that would make us.
427.
It would make us the second highest behind.
It would make us the third highest.
Third highest.
So right now, the largest region is actually in East Central, that includes Iowa City, Cedar Rapids, Dubuque, et cetera. So they're, they're over almost 601,000 at this point. And then Polk County is 490, and if the governing board added these, that would put us at 427.
Okay.
We are currently the second largest geographically, and that would move us to the largest geographically. Just as a caveat, if the department does assign these counties out, even if they don't assign them to us, it will make us the second largest, or it'll still make us the largest geographically, because it will, no, second largest geographically. And as far as population, I think will be probably still move above county social services if they drop 90,000 people, then we would be larger than them.
Um, I think we've probably interrupted you a couple of times.
The, the next thing I was going to talk about was just the population, and so you did ask those questions. And then you can see the two, the two maps that I gave you, the second map, the first map, as you identified, is the current regional structure. The second map would identify, all I put in there was the three counties that applied to us, and I did go over a little while ago where the other counties had applied, so Emmett County with the Tan Counties, Hancock with the pink, and Pocahontas and Humboldt with the yellow. And I don't know if you had some questions on just geography or population, I'd be more than happy to answer those.
I don't think I have any other questions. Do any other supervisors have any questions? Supervisor Olson?
Not on the population.
Why? Okay. Okay.
I do have a clarification to something that Lisa had brought up before. When we started as a region, Boone and Madison were together, and Warren was not part of that group. So it was Boone and Madison, but Warren joined because they were next door to Madison, and that's how we ended up with them. And when we first started, the, the conversation, there were a lot more people who were part of our conversation, but they kind of divided up into different areas. So when we first started, before everything was finalized, it was Franklin, Hamilton, Harden, Boone, Story, Marshall, and then we added Jasper before we got finalized, we added Warren, then I think immediately we added Powashik, uh, and then later on we added Green. So we have added some people, uh, some counties to our region as we've moved on. So I don't know if you have any questions about that. And, and like you said, Linda, it, looking at where people are, sometimes we make decisions based on what the department, when the department talked to me, they use the term service bubble. And so sometimes you look at who are your service providers, and who does it make sense to work with, because as you start looking at contracting, et cetera, then it makes a little more sense to work with them. So that's, I think, part of the discussion on why some of the counties decided to go with us. For instance, with Powashik County, I think they have a lot of similar providers with Jasper County, but it does, as Laura had pointed out, it does kind of look like they're kind of out a little bit on the eastern part of our region. And then when we added Green County, they use, um, some of the services that we have in Boone County, they use Irelie Ball, which comes out of Story as well, et cetera. So I think that's one of the reasons why we looked at, um, whether it made sense to come here, so. I don't know if you have any other questions on that?
I believe from our governing board meeting, there were certain services that were in the other three counties that were applying that would be, that we don't have necessarily as developed, that have available and then expand in our county, if I'm recalling our conversation correctly.
Right. So when we looked at that, and Lisa, as we look at service development, there are some services that we in Central Iowa Community Services do have that are not necessarily available in these counties, and then there are services in these counties that are not spread throughout our region. But the other thing is there are service providers. And so that was part of the conversation that I had with the governing board, that right now there are assertive community treatment teams that are available in the Fort Dodge area and in the Ames area, as well as in Des Moines. But we're served by Irelie Ball in an ACT team. And I think the last time I received information from them, we're, we have 15 clients that are in that program. The capacity for ACT, Carla can clarify for me, I believe, is up to 80 people in a team, and we're looking at 15 so far. Is that correct, Carla?
Yeah, I think roughly, I believe it's like 10 clients per staff member, I believe, so.
And so we don't have that program expanded outside of just Boone and Story at this point in time with Irelie Ball. Berry Hill, which is also a Unity Point affiliate, is the mental health center out of Fort Dodge, and they do cover Franklin and Hamilton, and they do have an ACT program there. And they have more people that are actually part of that program, and they provide ACT services also in Wright County. I do not believe they provide them in Saragordo. But one of the other things, and I think I might have identified it here in, as Laura has pointed out, my more reasons to join than not, but I did identify that there are a number of service providers that are in the northern part of that group if they were to add or join our region. And the benefit to that has to do with the, what I refer to as a service anchor. Right now, as we continue to look at service provision in our region, we have a couple of providers that do provide services regionally. And primarily, that's ITP, which is Integrated Telehealth Partners. They do a lot of, um, in jail services or ED services, where they'll do assessments, they'll provide psychiatric, they'll do bed finds, those sorts of things. And then the other, the other provider that we use significantly is Irelie Ball. They provide our mobile crisis response team to all 11 counties in our region currently, and we are working with them to implement a community-based crisis stabilization program in all of our counties. Other than that, we have some providers that have a larger footprint or a smaller footprint in our region based on what their business model is, what their availability of clients, et cetera. So in response to, I think, something that Laura had brought up before about a concern about being able to provide services across the region, we would not be relying on the providers that are necessarily currently in the region to meet the needs of all of the people that may or may not come into the region. The nice thing about Saragordo County and Webster County is they are large enough counties that they would bring other providers into the region. I have mentioned Berry Hill, we do use them a little bit. We have CFR that I think that you folks are familiar with because they, they also are in Story County. Those folks come out of, of Webster. There are a couple other providers there that serve, uh, supportive community living, et cetera. But the, the bulk, and I will, I'll be honest, I'm more familiar with Saragordo because I'm up here, but the bulk of, of the service providers that would be added to our region would come out of Saragordo County. We currently use a lot of those providers, but the nice thing about having them as part of our region is it would put them in the position where, and to, to Laura's point, Carla does our contracting, and it would put them in the position where Carla and I would work with them on contracting, service development, et cetera. And one of the advantages there is that it would allow us to draw on a larger pool of providers as we look at service development. If you are a provider agency and you have, have significant requests for service development, you have to prioritize, how do we continue to move forward on service development? We can only ask our providers to do so much, but if we have more providers that we can work with, then we can ask them to do more service development. And even though we currently work with these providers, I have more of a comfort base looking at development of programs and significant investment of dollars for providers who are part of our region, especially if we're looking at development of physical plant. So if we're asking someone, someone to do something that's going to require construction or remodeling of, of a facility, then I would like to see those dollars be reinvested in programs that are physically located in counties that are in our region, because those are the people who are bringing the tax dollars to the table when we're looking at this kind of development. So out of, out of Mason City, we have 43 North Iowa, which is, they provide transitional living center, they provide, that's the North Iowa Transition Center, they provide supportive employment. We have Opportunity Village, which is now One Vision. I'm, I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with them. We have Mercy Medical Center, has a behavioral health inpatient unit. We have outpatient psychiatric, and, uh, so there are a lot of providers that come into the program. And I did send admin a list of the various providers that are in those counties that would potentially come into play. I don't know if that answers any questions about provider agencies. I think you asked me a simple question, and I might have went on, on a longer answer than you needed or wanted.
I want to respond to that, and then Supervisor Olson has another question. Uh, I am familiar with Berry Hill, I'm familiar with the assertive community treatment team there because I was still working in corrections when we started that. I'm glad to hear it's still going. Um, I, I think Berry Hill has excellent services. I'm also familiar with Mercy in Saragordo and their inpatient unit, and I think it does bring some additional resources in for, you know, Franklin County in particular, you're using them now, but to have them more in the fold, you know, and for other counties, I think that's, I, I think that is a good point. So I just wanted to thank you for bringing those up. Supervisor Olson, you have another question?
Yes, um, Russ, I had a conversation with Mark Campbell. He reached out to me a week or two weeks ago, okay? And we discussed a little bit, I said, how did you want to leave, and, and what, what's your current region like? And he indicated to me that the region itself was providing some services, and you, I think, referenced that briefly here a couple minutes ago. So what happens with those services if these three counties come to us? Because we have a rule that we don't pay for county-operated services. So, so can you explain to me about services with?
Sure. So, so first off, for the group, Mark Campbell is the supervisor from Webster County, right? And so county social services, the primary things that they provide, as you, as you identified, are the iStart program, and then they do some case management. So we used to, including Story County, we used to do case management, and we, we stopped doing that a number of years ago. Story County, you had historically with the, um...
Was what we have to say.
Yeah, right, right. So that would be similar. So when we met with these counties, when they approached us, we were very clear to them that our regional governing board made a decision that effective July of this year, we have no counties that are providing services. So in, in their region, they are not county employees, they are regional. So that is a private entity, and if that entity wants to continue to provide those services, they can continue to do that. If those clients need a service that that entity is providing, then they would work with a service coordinator who would request the services. It would go to Lynn Adams, who is our service coordination officer, and Lynn Adams would make an assessment on, on whether or not it should be funded. Before he would be able to fund it, we would have entered into a contract, and that would be Carla's responsibility, with county social services for the iStart program. And in order to do that, we would have to ensure that the services that they're providing would meet the requirements that we have with any service, and that is, what are, what is the care plan, what are the outcomes expected, et cetera. So that, that's part of that. I don't know if that answered your question. Basically, we told them that if they join the region, it would not include us taking any component of a provider agency into our region. We do not do that, and we would not do that.
They did. You did answer. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Russell, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Uh, the only thing is, at the rest of that page, I just identified some of the issues that are coming up that we have to address, and I just want to touch base on that. Uh, when we had some of the supervisors on our governing board that have identified this is a very short turnaround and making a decision, and I do respect that, but I wanted to identify for them things that we would have to do as staff if they do accept the county into our region. And I'm going to go back to what Lisa had brought up a while back, and that is, if our county governing board, if our regional governing board votes no, the Department of Human Services could still place any or all of these counties in our region. I'm not saying they will, I'm saying they could. If so, that would happen in February. And so these five items that I've identified here would have to occur from the time of placement before July 1, as opposed to the time the governing board makes a decision before July 1. And we would have to look at budgeting, we would have to look at contracting with the providers, we would have to look at notices of decision for each one of those clients, because right now, the notices of decision are from a different region to a provider under a different contract. So all of that would have to be done, and we would want to try, and our goal, and I, I speak for all of admin on this, we do not want a change that's going to affect a client in an adverse fashion. Our goal is to provide services to individuals with disabilities. And any of this that we can do in the, in a longer timeframe allows us to, to do more of a phase in. And as we look at it from an administrative perspective, we want to make sure that clients are not adversely affected by this. So that just kind of gives you an idea, and I'm not going to go through that, but I would answer questions on that if you like. Otherwise, I know I'm taking up a lot of your agenda time, and, and I would just go to the, um, as Laura's pointed out, fairly biased comments that I have on the last page.
I don't have questions. I guess my comment to you, Russell, is I appreciate you being on today. I just knew from our meetings, our governing meeting, the information that we went over was so vast and so detailed that I could not reiterate it as well as having you present it to my colleagues. And I, colleagues wanted to have information before voting on anything. So I appreciate you taking your time today.
Right. And, and I pointed out to Lisa and... Right, and I pointed out to Lisa and other people too, I'm more than happy, if you send me an invite, if you want me to come and talk at future meetings about anything, not just this, anything related to the region, I'm more than happy to do that. I did point out that as long as everybody doesn't ask me to be on at the same Tuesday at 10:00 a.m., I am more than happy to do that. But I'm just going to go ahead and I'm just going to just briefly talk about this, and then I'm more than happy to answer specific questions. But my perspective in the conversation I had with admin is if you look at us as an insurance agency, our region has three functions primarily. Primarily, we do service coordination. So we get an individual who has a behavioral health, mental health, brain health disability, and we work with that individual through service coordination to get them the supports and programs that they need in order to live, work, and recreate in the community of their choice, to use an old phrase. And so our job and half of the employees in our region are service coordination. So that tells you the impetus that we put on that. We don't want to turn people away. We may not be able to fund everything a client wants, but we do a lot of care coordination for individuals, even if it's something that's Medicaid-funded, or even if it's something that might be referred to as information and referral, public education, et cetera. So the primary thing we do is the service coordination. The second thing that we do is service development. So a lot of what I've done historically, and now what Patty tribal leads will be working on, is looking at where we at as a region, what services do we provide, what are the gaps in service, how do we encourage services that are recovery-oriented, that are a good return on investment of the taxpayers' dollars, and that meet the needs of the individuals that we've been charged with serving. The last thing that we do is funding. So when you look at it from a funding perspective, you are, for lack of a better term, a public insurance agency. So as a region, we take tax dollars from the people that live in our region, and even though we say it's $26 per capita, it really does boil down to the property values of the property that you own. It comes out to $26 per capita, but some people pay more than that and some people pay less. But our intent is to look at, when we get those dollars, we look at those dollars sort of as a premium. And as, from an insurance perspective, adding more counties adds more covered lives, and it adds more premium. So what that gives us is it gives us the ability to spread our risk of what an insurance agent might refer to as an outlier. So instead of having to be concerned if you're a small region, and we are not a small region, we're not a small region right now, but if you're in a small region and you have one individual that ends up in a mental health institute, it could adversely affect your budget to a point where it's difficult to plan. Adding more individuals to your region gives you more flexibility in how you divide the risk or share the risk across those individuals. So from that perspective, adding more covered lives makes it easier to plan. That doesn't address necessarily these counties, and it doesn't necessarily mean any one, two, or three of these counties, but it just in general. The other thing that I identified in here is that it does allow us, which I talked about before, looking at those contracted providers, and it allows us to develop what I term here as critical mass. So as we look at service development in our region, we're currently working with Mary Greeley Medical Center on potentially looking at development of some complex need services there in Ames, and those services would be things that would potentially meet the needs of all of our region. But we do continue to come back to the same providers a lot to try to develop these complex needs. And I don't know, Carla, if you know how many years we've been having this conversation on developing this, but I believe it's been more than five. And I understand that providers, I brought up before, that they have other things that they're doing, and when we ask them to continually do new things, they have to prioritize in their planning what they can do. The reason we keep looking at your area is because we have to have critical mass. We have to have enough clients to be served by that provider so that that provider can bill Medicaid or us fee-for-service or Blue Cross/Blue Shield or Principal or whoever enough money to meet their cost. So if I look at developing a subacute facility, and I'm looking at developing it in Hampton, I don't have the critical mass necessary to put clients in that program that would allow that provider to actually draw down revenue to offset their cost. If we add these counties that are in the northern part, then that would allow us to develop critical mass to be able to look at additional development with additional premiums, if you will, that those counties bring in. So if we look at developing subacute in Ames, and we look at then developing an additional subacute in the northern part of our region, we would have the critical mass to be able to do that. And we would not be requiring people to potentially drive an hour to get a service. There are access standards that we have to follow with the state, and some of those access standards say that I can put an individual who hasn't had an assessment in the back of a sheriff's vehicle and drive them two hours and then have them assessed. I don't think that's therapeutic, and I don't think that's what we want for our clients. And if we can do something to make more access in a shorter period of time for individuals, then we're looking at less trauma for those individuals. The whole concept that we have had as counties before we were regions, and now as a region, is looking at community. So we want community-based, you had your community life program, we looked at moving people out of residential care facility and supported community living. We've looked at moving people out of sheltered workshop into supportive employment. We've looked at moving people out of large, congregate facilities into the community, and we still want to, if possible, keeping in mind that these are public tax dollars that we're using, we want to see how we can invest dollars to allow people to be more in their community rather than having to ride or drive an hour or more away to get services. And we can't really do that if we don't have the critical mass unless we take tax dollars from our property taxes and use those to supplement Medicaid dollars. We do have to do that with some of our programs, but we go out of our way to not do that. And so this is an opportunity for us to try to do that. I don't know if...
Thank you very much. Thank you. I think you answered all the questions. I'm going to see if you have another question. Do you have another question?
It's not so much a question as to move back to when we get to the discussion.
Okay, and I was hoping to get us to discussion because we are at 11:00. And I have a commitment I made for 12:30 on the front desk, so I'm hoping you can get done by then. Okay, so this is a, not discussion and considerations, discussion and information. I think we know that Supervisor Headless is our representative on the CICS board and shall be voting for Story County, but we can discuss the information.
That's why I kind of put on the agenda, my understanding in the past, when an additional county was put on, it was brought forth for discussion and information.
So it came up near the end, Russell was talking here about, you know, about critical mass, et cetera, but another point that came out of my conversation with Mark Campbell, interested in leaving, he talked about the fact that with too many board members, too many counties of CSS, that the individual needs for counties got lost, okay? And he said, you're one vote out of 22 votes, and then they were even subdivided, as I understand it, to two separate, west and east, and the services offered were the same between west and east. And I am very concerned that as we creep up here, that we're hitting that point where there is going to be division, especially while Russell did a good job of thinking it's only a bad point for us is only having one area kind of concentration, which would be Story County, right, with like Mary Greeley and some other services right now. But that if we bring in Saragordo and Webster County, that there might be a possibility that there starts to be pull, you know, friction, all right, about who's going to get what, which I'm assuming is what happened in CSS, to have those two regions that went out. But what has said to me really struck, okay? At what point do you give, when just you have to advocate for your residents or what has been before, and all of a sudden, we are too big? And I'm very concerned about that. And for me, adding that in with how I jumped right in and said is, why don't we have any details? I'm still very, very concerned about this. It sounds wonderful. I've watched CICS grow from, I think it's first or second meeting I used to sit there, okay? It is an excellent admin team we have, and the format, the success we've had speaks to the format of it. I'm just thinking that have we hit a place where we should recognize what, everything that has worked for us and be very careful that we don't move over that hump into everything that went wrong with CSS?
And I'm writing down your notes. I've added that, so. Well, I think some of CSS's problems originated with an individual who's in a long repair. And it is much more of a spread-out area. Large areas don't particularly scare me, as long as you've got communities. I mean, I look at this, Mason City, Fort Dodge, Marshalltown are communities, and Ames, even though Ames is different, it's a university town, but our communities are roughly the same sort. I'm looking at the, you know, the counties around them, and they're kind of like metro hubs. I just don't see the concern that, you know, how big is too big? I think it's too big when it doesn't work. I don't think those three counties added in will be a big sea change for CICS, because those counties have worked together on other things before. So I'm not concerned about that. I think that you did answer the question, and I appreciate having more information on what that July 1, 2021 entry date is, and why, and you're basing it on something has to be done by then. And this would get, you know, in my mind, taking those three counties in now, I look at it, and if they wanted to come this way, it seemed like the likelihood would be that DHS would have them come this way. So I think that CICS taking those counties in now gives some adequate time to do all of the issues that need to be taken care of in a thoughtful, prudent manner rather than just a scrambling. And I could see there could be a big scramble near the end, and as we know from this year, you think you've got plenty of time to do something, and then a pandemic hits, you know? And there's some projects we've had on hold for months because of COVID-19, because all resources had to go there. So at this point, you know, we still have a lot of uncertainty about where the pandemic is going, all of those things, that puts county government in a unique position, all our government in a unique position. So I basically am forgiving the time so people can do it in a, you know, can get it done and not have to shoe-point it in with whatever the next crisis is, endemic, derecho, whatever. So I'm, I, my, I do not have a difference with Supervisor Olson to ask about it.
I appreciate both your input. I mean, Laura's, your question or your concerns are very valid, because as Russell said, I asked those same questions to them. So that is certainly on my mind. You know, I may have some additional questions for Russell after this meeting, that I'll give him a call for, based on the conversations here today. And I think that, Russell, I really appreciate you being here, because it is a big change. There's a lot of information here, and I knew I couldn't articulate it as eloquently or as detailed as Russell could to help answer those questions. And probably, I think he probably answered some of your questions and some of mine, but facilitated some additional questions as well. So I appreciate your time, Russell, and I appreciate the input from my colleagues. Certainly, I'll tell you to talk to you again before our next, and Carla, probably before our next CICS meeting.
And Russell, I just want to emphasize, thanks for taking, thanks for taking the onslaught, okay? You know, but for you and Carla, I just want to emphasize once again, for the entire admin team of CICS, having watched this since its inception, what, five, six years ago, it's a solid, really professional, well-respected team, okay? So I know that you guys are going to do, and your recommendation comes from the place of what's good for providing services to the consumer, okay? And also keeping in thoughts about the other issues. So I just want you to know that, okay? Very highly welcome.
Russell and Carla, thank you very much, both of you, and Russell, good to see you again.
Thank you.
Very, very... Carla, anything else? Thank you. Then we will go on to agency reports. We have none. Consideration of minutes, we have two sets of minutes from September 8th to September 10th.
Aye.
Edens?
Aye.
Markan? Aye. Minutes approved, thank you. And after we, the election gets done, I'm sure we'll get all caught up there, but I know how busy this election has been for the auditor's office, so I understand why we're not totally caught up. Consideration of personnel actions, I've entertained a motion for approval of personnel actions as presented.
So who?
Second? Edens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Markan? Aye. Approved. Next, the consent agenda, are we pulling anything today?
No, we are not.
I would entertain a motion for approval of consent agenda as listed.
So who?
Second?
Olson?
Aye.
Edens?
Aye.
Markan? Aye. Approved. Public hearing items is next, we have none. Next, additional items, discussion, consideration of criteria to consider reclosing at county office or offices due to COVID-19. I drafted something just to get us started. I did not put any very specific metrics in it, and the reason I didn't was because I think we need guidance of the things we're going to consider and some idea, but to say an X percent this or that. Supervisor Olson, you provided, this was a really interesting article, I thought, from the Duke paper last weekend, which basically said that there's, again, concerns about how IDPH is presenting, and if they didn't have a birthday, even they weren't entering people into their database, which meant that several counties had higher percentages of positive tests than IDPH was presenting. And, you know, reading that kind of stuff, reading some other stuff, I just thought, I'm really uncomfortable setting just an absolute metric here, because the data keeps shifting. I think we need to be focused in on what are the factors, you know, what are the positives? Why didn't we reopen the buildings we did? And what factors might increase rates, you know? And just to look at what our purpose would be. So that's what I did. And I guess suggested criteria were a two-week increase in the new, that lead us to look at reclosing. First, a two-week increase in the new positive COVID-19 case rate in Story County. Second, significant problems in enforcing our social distancing and face covering requirements for county buildings. Third, a significant increase in the number of positive COVID-19 cases among Story County employees, which would mean both we would be concerned about more spread in our workforce, and secondly, do we have enough people to keep an office or offices open? So special considerations, I listed two. We need to realize if we reclose the admin building, the auditor will need to ensure that early in-person voting options for the number of third election remain available, and I would, you know, will obviously be leaving that up to our auditor and commissioner of elections to have to do that. Second, if we reclose portions of the justice center but the courts continue operation, we'll need to continue to provide access and support to poll operations. That's, so basically, those last two, two sections there were what I put out here for, as my recommendation for discussion.
You know, I think it's a good starting point for us to look at. I appreciate your comment to saying you weren't sure when you talked about what, not that you're presented in for that two-week positive increase, I'm not sure what that would be. Is it a 5% increase? Is it also a 15% increase? You know, I think the other thing that comes into play here, excuse me.
That's, so basically those last two, two sections there were what I put out here for, as my recommendation for discussion.
You know, I think it's a good starting point for us to look at. I appreciate your comment to saying you weren't sure when you talked about what, not that you're presented in for that two-week positive increase, I'm not sure what that would be. Is it a 5% increase? Is it also a 15% increase? You know, I think the other thing that comes into play here, excuse me, is obviously if the governor starts, you know, kind of shutting things down again, that is going to play into a decision factor. I think as we see, obviously where things are in Story County, as you have, have on here, I think the other consideration is if you look at potentially closing down, would you potentially close down for a short amount of time or would it be another lengthy amount of time? And it's kind of hard, hard to say that's a solid decision you'd make at the time if you have to shut down again. But I do think this is a starting point and I, you know, it's, I feel kind of bad that we're even having to have this conversation, we just reopened the building, but I think we're also being very cognizant and saying there's a potential that we may have to close the building again. People want to know what that criteria may be. I just don't know that we can be as specific right now. I'd like us to have a little bit more specifics. I'm not quite sure what those specifics, what yet, what yet could be for us to shut back down, particularly since we do have masking, you know, we did have masking, we did have plexiglass, we did have some of the social distancing stickers and other things in play. Those are just some of my thoughts or concerns, comments.
I think Linda did a good job in staying away from the actual percentages rather than the two-week increase, right? So if we get a weekend bump after a particular significant event and then we go back down, we understand that was a bump and we just get really watched carefully to make sure those people in that bump didn't go out and continue to hang around with other people, freedom, okay? But I do like these because I think they are very specific to what will it take for the county to shut down? And one thing I believe we've all had, whether it's sitting here or the people who are on the call today, you know, listening in, is we've all received lots of feedback about the building being shut down. Some of it positive and affirming, you did the right thing, some of it questioning how long we've been, right? And yet we've been able to provide services as was pointed out and some people don't accept that. So looking at what Linda's laid out here is very much related to how we would be able to operate. Why would we do this? And very, I think even closer into the reasons why we would look at re-closing because of employee health or safety of the public, you know, inability to deliver services. So I like this to be a little, a little broader right now and then for us to have the discussion about when people start saying, should we close or the indicators aren't. I'm not sure, I wouldn't put, well, I agree with you Lisa, that Governor Rannell, when she starts doing things, but she's not doing what we want her to do, so I'm not, I'm not excited about putting this in, you know, in the figure here. So I like it.
So what's your pleasure?
Uh, is it my turn? Asoho, okay? That we adopt these criteria to consider when the time comes when we think we need to look at possibly re-closing the buildings for the public.
Second.
Any further discussion?
My opinion would be, I think through our CCMT meetings is probably where we'll have more detailed conversations as to before it, we come to us for a vote to close, if the need, future-wise, were to re-close the building.
Certainly, because that's what we have done before is on recommendation of CCMT and it was members of the CCMT that in fact said, what are, what are you, what are you going to look at or what are you going to look at as possible to close?
So I withdraw my motion? Shelley, you want to withdraw it or you want us to vote it down?
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding what you're saying.
So my motion instead would be something that either adding subject to the CCMT or we bring it back next week instead, after the CCMT has a opportunity to look at it and make comments on it.
Hmm.
So that would be the vote down and then we just go ahead and bring it up at tomorrow's CCMT meeting and then we would go ahead and do the vote next week.
Okay, so you want, okay. I got a little confused. I thought we were talking about we would talk with the CCMT before recommending re-closing, which you're taking it back and others definitely saying, let's run this by them to see if they think we missed anything.
Yes, I was saying that. I'm looking up there at, you know, staff on the line and they gave feedback and when CCMT came up, it did trigger in me about, yeah, that'd be a good time to have this discussion with the CCMT, see if they have anything to add and then do that. So that's why I was saying we can vote down my motion, which would make it now and then the policy, and instead take this to CCMT tomorrow, see if there are any comments or questions about expanding these broad criteria and then bring it back next week if there are cha, either way, and vote on it then. That's what I was kind of looking at. But you were looking at the opposite, we could go ahead and adopt.
Well, I just wasn't understanding what you were saying.
Okay.
Okay, so do you want to just withdraw your motions?
I was gonna do that, but.
I was just, I was just saying that, so that's what you're saying.
Second, so we better, we better write it down.
Okay. Then any further discussion? So a vote on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
All in favor, say aye, I'll post a sign. Nevermind. Actually, I should have just, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay, Olson.
Nay.
Edens.
Nay.
Okay, Merkin, nay. So then, let's hear, should we just agree that it's going to, that we'll take it to CCMT? We don't have to. We'll directly end, put it on the agenda for CCMT tomorrow?
I will, I will amend the agenda. It's already posted.
I know it's already posted, yeah, okay.
Well, it's under reconstitution anyway, so it's, you know, so it's, it's okay.
It's already been publicly posted, so.
And I, Treasure Rasmus, and I don't know if you can read his comment, I'm sure he'll share it tomorrow as well. We have allowed, we have allowed appointments in the treasure of office to be made through next Friday, Friday, 10/16. I understand that closing the building may have to happen and happen quickly, but I would like to work as hard as possible on those plans as always.
Okay. Yeah, we can talk more about that tomorrow because yesterday it went well down at the desk. So that's day one about.
Right. And I appreciate that and that's why, that's why I think having a CCMT, there's things that we wouldn't necessarily initially think of that they're going to think of. I think it's a great idea, Lisa, thanks for.
Okay, got it.
Open it up.
Then, let's head on to, I don't know, to your discussion of consideration of updated IDPH quarantine guidelines. Todd Bunville and Alyssa Whitman?
Yes, good morning, board. I just wanted to bring this before you as the Iowa Department of Public Health has released some information that's a little bit different than the CDC's recommendations. And so within our paperwork, we always say to refer, with our employees, we say to refer to the Iowa Department of Public Health and CDC's guidelines. So there'd be a, depending on what we do with this, there may need to be a slight adjustment to that documentation. But this documentation, the Iowa Department of Public Health has decided to make the return to work and quarantining a little bit different. And it mostly depends on if both parties are wearing a face mask, then anybody that is considered exposed or a contact, at most, you know, would still be required to work from home or, or be quarantined unless both parties are wearing masks and then that quarantine doesn't need to happen. And it also applies to anybody that's currently in quarantine. Let's say they've got six more days left on their quarantine. If we enact this and both parties were wearing masks at those times of exposure, those people are allowed to come out of quarantine and come right back to work. So that's the, the short version of this two-page, page and a half document, but that's what the Iowa Department of Public Health says they have done. They've, they've done studies. It sounds like Nebraska and a couple other states have also accepted these guidelines and are doing it within their states. So we wanted to bring this to you and you all and let you look at it and ask any questions you have about it and then you see what we need to do moving forward.
I just want to mention, I know that both parties need to, or all parties need to be wearing face covering. It's just clearly it states that they're not only worn, but they're worn correctly. So not only just over the mouth, but they're over the nose as well. I just wanted to add that.
So I'd ask for this to be put on the agenda because my questions are, can we still or do we legally still need to, because of other reasons, keep our quarantine and self-isolation policies the same? And another question is, how would this impact in any way how we would pay somebody who was home for exposure? Right? We, we did some policies early on when we shut down or when we went through this about this, that in certain instances, people who are exposed get to stay home for two weeks, 14-day phase, right? So my question here, or why I wanted to know about this, is what does this mean for us? What does this mean for our employees related to work? And that's the email, I think I sent to Todd and Alyssa, okay? So tell me about this, please, given our policy is federal about paying people about for exposure.
Sure, sure, I can address that. As far as paying people, if we require them to quarantine because they're not wearing their masks appropriately, that federal pay and our policy, we still have it. The COVID need is not going away.
Okay.
They would still have it to use for isolation, testing, wait while they're waiting for their test. If they, for some reason, were not wearing their masks, which would be against our county policy or the board's policy and if implemented within the offices, then they would need to go home and quarantine and they could use that 80 hours of pay. So this, this IDPH guidance would not change our policy or how people are paid or different things. It would actually allow employees to continue working and not have to quarantine at home and, and reduce, I mean, if they've already had to quarantine once, those 80 hours are gone.
Right.
If you think about it. So it could, it could also assist during, we're getting into winter and we, we will have certain employees, essential employees to remove snow, keep different things like that. So this guidance would assist with, with that, those situations. We wouldn't automatically have to send somebody home if they were exposed.
Okay, so what about though the other employees? So let's say that you're working around someone who in the past, you know, that if they were exposed, they were going to be self-isolated or working from home or doing whatever they could, you know, okay? Now it's like, what if the employee says, no, I don't want to have to do that? We're saying that, but the two other employees in the same work area that have interaction with that employee don't feel safe anymore. That's, yeah, so, so what happens then?
If, if you have an employee that wants to stay home because they were exposed? Did that?
No, the opposite. It's an employee who was exposed, but now according to these more detailed guidelines about where's your mask on, right or wrong, and what, whatever the other person's doing, right? It used to be pretty cut and dry. And that gave some assurance to other employees that if someone did get exposed with someone like, you know, that they were, that other employee was out in the workplace. Now that other employee could make that option to say, well, I was exposed, but I had a face mask on, so I don't have to do this, blah, 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 or the other person did. So, but I'm the third employee, I'm working, I'm at work, I have to work with that person and I don't have the same assurance anymore. Can we, can we tell someone you have to go home because you were exposed and your fellow employees are uncomfortable with you working around?
I, I don't think you use the, the piece that the fellow employees are uncomfortable unless, I mean, there, there's community, right? So you're, you're technically out there, I mean, if you go to the grocery store or anything like that too. I, I mean, I mean, that's, that's the piece of it now. The board can make a decision, we are just going to automatically quarantine. You can go with CDC guidance, you don't have to necessarily go with IDPH guidance. Understand that most entities are going with IDPH guidance. Most school districts are going with it. I sent an email to other counties and asked, are you using IDPH guidance? And they, they are going with the public health guidance. Now, that doesn't mean we have to.
Was this guidance kind of a reaction to school having so many kids?
It, it, it could be. The, the other piece of it is you do have different elected offices.
I understand.
So they could choose to not have their staff quarantine. It is something that we could be faced with. So I think we want to be fairly consistent across the county and, and how we handle this and, and different things.
Right now, we have a policy for the board of supervisors that some of the other office elected officials have adopted about to go home for two weeks, right? Or self-isolate, self-quarantine, work at home, whatever. That's our policy, we wrote it down.
We go with IDPH and CDC.
So then we need to change our policy. So we'll need to have, we bring something up.
We're asking if you want to, but we, we state in here that says IDPH or CDC guidance. So if the board wants to go with IDPH, it would, I, I would recommend having us just saying here, according to quarantine, we will be using IDPH.
That's what I was looking for.
Whatever the board wants to do and then we can sure bring back the document and put it on the consent agenda. We, we just need direction from the board as, as how you want to handle these situations.
Like if we need to be clear, the, for the employees, and that's both the employee who might have exposure and the employee who's working with the first, the employee who might have exposure, right? Just they need to be clear.
But what if you have elected officials that don't?
Then they have to go with their elected officials, I got it. Same thing we went through at the beginning here. I just, you know, all we can do is, well, we're, we are able to adapt or adapt.
Now, now, we can, just because you quarantine them doesn't necessar, we're trying to come up with some things, you know, can the employees work from home? Doesn't mean it can't work. I think, I think the main thing is we have put measures in place to reduce the transmission as much, much as possible. We are not having a lot of in-person meetings within six feet each other. We are, we, we put plexiglass up. We do have a face mask mandate. There are counties that are going with this that don't have that face mask, right? So they're using, it's employee choice whether they wear the face mask and then that would depend upon the quarantine requirement.
I have a question as well too. Sure. Are you still asking questions?
I'm good.
I mean, for that vote. Okay, I've seen things in the last few days about the CDC is now saying that six feet, that the aerosols and the, the spray that, that can transmit the COVID can go further than six feet. And I don't know, I've not checked CDC website to see if they've changed that, but what we've gone by in the county is that you need to wear face covering if you cannot socially distance and we've defined socially distancing as six feet.
At least six feet.
Well, at least six feet, but if you don't say it's seven feet, at least six feet is six feet.
We also have in our, in our policy that if you're in a common area, regardless of whether it's six feet or not.
In a common area.
So when you're going to restroom or going in hallway, we, we have put a face covering policy.
Certainly. But what I'm saying is people leave that social distancing is six feet and if you're not in a common area and you're at least six feet away from people, you've got, you've got a face covering. I'm just asking if we need to revisit that? Because what, what the CDC, and Todd, I don't know if you've seen anything on this.
Yeah, it's, I've got the CDC up right now. It says it can sometimes be spread by airborne transmission. I have not read the full detail to know that. I also know that this information on the quarantine recommendations from IDPH that's provided to the board of health, I tried to reach out to Dr. Passion for some additional information and he at that time had not had the opportunity to read it. I have a feeling that there is a board of health meeting today that this will come up in question as well on it. But I do know that he's aware of it because I sent him the information and asked for his thoughts on it.
So back to what, this question and with Lisa's, you know, question, then to the board of health, okay? So as I said, I brought it up here so we could offer some kind of firmer information to the employees. And Melissa's saying, do you want to go ahead and change what our policy is? It says CDC or IDPH. And right now we're going with the CDC's of two weeks, right? But now you're saying, but with this IDPH, which is only a recommendation, we don't have to follow it, we put. have to follow it, we could go ahead and put in our, or issue a memo. I think it's like hearing that, if we could vote to have the chair issue a memo to everyone, saying now we're going to use IDPH guidelines.
And we use, it says CDC and IDPH. And up until this point, their quarantine guidelines.
Oh, right. But now they've changed.
But now they've changed.
That's why there's.
Which is why we're here having this discussion to see what direction the board is.
So with Lisa, that Linda brought that up about, whoa, wait a minute, if you're a CDC, do, it looks like, are there guidelines yet or are there recommendations? And what will the Board of Health do? So that just kind of point out that we may have some changes, I guess. This will wait to hear the way in from these other two, and then we'll need to decide what are we going to do.
And I think they're going to have changes from here on out. Unfortunately, they're going to look at things, things are changing all the time. And so while it might be today, this is the guidance, three months from now, it might be something completely different. We don't know.
I understand, Melissa, but as you pointed out, the bottom line of my aspect we put on the agenda is the CDC and IDPH don't agree. So we need to decide what are we going to do for our employees about when they have to go home, when they work? What do we say to other employees if we make it an option to go, I mean, tell people we're going with the IDPH? What do we say to that employee sitting on the desk then? Or interacting on a regular basis where at first I or he or she were assured that if they were exposed, they were out of the building or out of their work area, okay? They're self-examined. Now, that person could be sitting here and be in there 48 hours before something show up, or could never show up, and they're, but they had a mask on.
I think they're still saying if you were exposed, it's just redefining exposure.
Well, yeah, but that's, you know, were you wearing that mask correct? Was the other person wearing that mask? And I think the.
Just, I'll let Todd talk.
Just to help with the little information on this, so if the person that tests positive at any time did not have their mask on, then everybody still has to quarantine, just like we've always had to do it. If, again, if the person that's positive doesn't wear their mask properly, everybody that they exposed to with the three guidelines of within six feet, more than 15 minutes, and obviously didn't have a mask on, those are the three main questions we ask, then that person that has the exposure still has to quarantine. And Laura, to your point, yes, the risk possibility is higher for the spread with the Iowa Department of Public Health guidelines, but they're saying that they, even though the risk is higher, they have not seen a significant amount of spread by following their guidelines. Now, going back to what the CDC has said about the aerosols, yes, they are saying now that the fragments are, aerosol is itty-bitty droplets, okay? There's three definitions, there's particles, there's aerosols, and there's large droplets. Aerosols are said now to be, they realize they now do go further than the six feet rule, and that they do hang in the air longer than previously reported. That's not really new information for anybody that's been following COVID. They've actually said that since the beginning. But again, this is just aerosol droplets. They're not, the amount that it takes for you, I mean, you basically have to stand in that pool of droplets to worry about getting an infection from it. And the CDC says right in the new guy, or their information, it's not guidelines yet, that contact is still the number one way to spread this by far. They have, I'm trying to remember from the article, they had a few cases of where they believe aerosol droplets did spread, but it was in confined spaces, in closed buildings without good air ventilation is where every one of these cases did occur, but it was still far, far less case, I mean, it's not even comparable in numbers, really, but they didn't give a percentage to it. So I just wanted to get that information out there. I hope that's clear.
Thanks, Todd. So I guess nothing else. Any other questions?
No, I don't have any personal at this time.
So what's the board's question?
I would like to see us just stay with this, you have the exposure, you know, to let your supervisor know and see how you can isolate or stay away from other people, what we're doing now, okay, through HR, what they've done. I don't want to have a whole change to the IDPH, you know, more liberal guidelines. That's me personally, right? I'd like to stay with where we are now and keep it that way, but that is my preference.
For clarification, you go with the CDC guideline.
I go with the CDC guideline.
Yeah, I'm a little bit more inclined to stay with the CDC guidelines. I did email the Iowa Medical Society to just get their take on the new guidelines for IDPH. I have not heard that from them yet. Yeah, they're all good, I'm sure they're getting inquiries, remember, things like that. And as I said, the Board of Health has not weighed in on it as well. I think my initial thought would be to stay with the CDC guidelines, but they may have specific justifications or reasons why the IDPH, the change for the IDPH guidelines are fine as well. I guess my initial thought would be maybe to bring this back next week. I mean, we can look at it right now and stuff it'd be, but then maybe bring it back, I mean, go down that, but if maybe bring back with any additional information that may lead to some change.
I'm good with that, too. Yeah.
I'm trying to see exactly what the Board of Health has on its agenda this afternoon. And I'm looking at the agenda, there's a discussion and consideration of COVID-19 on quarantine order by last light, but that's something different, I think.
Yeah, that's the changes.
Yeah. And there's COVID-19 reporting and updates, summary of information sharing.
If you look at the update, it could be covered under the update.
Yeah.
And we could reach out and see if last light, if public health would join. I mean, that's up to.
Public health will be on the call.
On the call.
Yeah, they're always on that sort of call unless there's a situation to take them.
I just don't know if they'd be willing to discuss it without having it specifically on their agenda, but I did just send Dr. Passion an email. I had one, I owed him one. So I gave him the response and asked if they were going to discuss it today. So what I think I'm hearing is let's not quite jump into this yet, but let's do a little more discussion, maybe talk to last white and see if the Board of Health might be willing to address this. But if there's a motion, is there a motion to adopt IDPH guidelines?
No, I don't have one.
Nobody's got, nobody has a motion, so I guess we're.
We're good where we are.
But I think we should discuss it again and maybe see where the CDC goes and see if you would reach out to.
We've been watching the CDC, they're really pushing the masks, and I think the masks are a great way to reduce, and that, I just haven't seen where they have updated anything with.
Yeah, I haven't seen anything either.
With the quarantine, it might become, I don't, I don't know. I haven't heard anything. And I don't think Todd has either.
Yeah, I think this is one of these issues where we really have to weigh certain things. And I don't think every employee's going to be happy because there may be some people who say, no, I don't want to go home. You know, I, you know, I was wearing face covering, and there are people who say, I don't need this or I'd need that. So I don't think we'll come up with something that everybody's going to feel perfectly ecstatic about.
Correct.
So we'll probably revisit it. But thank you for bringing this.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we'll move on to discussion and consideration of permanently increasing the planning and development department's planning intern position hours and also creating a new temporary planning intern position for only FYI '21. Jerry Moore, good morning. Jerry? Okay. You're unmuted. The floor is yours. Jerry, we can't seem to hear you. I'm not sure why. Exterminate.
Okay. Good morning, board. This is Jerry.
Jerry.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for your consideration of this item. Based on the current workload and the future projected workload, and based also on my departure from the department, which will be October 9, we would like the board to consider two things. One is to increase the hours of the current planning intern position. Currently, during the academic school year, the hours are, that are permitted are up to 15 hours per week. And then during the summer months, it's a full-time 40-hour-a-week position. So that's the first thing. We're asking to increase the hours from 15 hours during the academic school year, so it's from August through May, from 15 hours to 20 hours. And we're also asking for a temporary new planner position during the academic school year, and it would be just for this current fiscal year, so now through the end of June, to create a position for up to 20 hours. And so if you just look at the activity level, we've had close to 700 zoning permits over the last five years. We've had 200 development case applications for conditional use permits, rezoning requests, subdivision plats. We also have an active work program where we've got 25 items. You know, we're actively working on 10 of those very strongly right now. If you look at our last quarter, the second quarter for this year, we had the most number of cases and zoning permits from the previous three years, second quarter, during a pandemic, which is awesome. We had a lot of people at home, and they decided to take on a lot of different projects. Also, 2018 was probably our best year within the last five years in terms of zoning permits and development case activity, exceeding the previous three years' level. This quarter, we're down slightly from the previous third quarter, but I think we're going to end up very close to the levels that we had last year.
I just wanted to ask, are, do you see below, or can you?
So our interns.
You just have to make sure there's three inches of white space at the top. It can be on a legal-sized piece of paper, not letter. I mean.
Can the board still hear me?
Yeah, we're, yeah, somebody else.
Okay. Our interns are very active in our department. They take on a lot of different things. They help with zoning permit reviews, development case applications, they assist with the land evaluation site assessment reviews, they're actively involved in using our JAS system for research, they help us do site reviews, they assist in putting information that submitted case applications on our intranet for the rest of the county departments to review. They also get involved in presenting and preparing staff reports and PowerPoint presentations to the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Board of Adjustment, and the Board of Supervisors, as you know. Emily, our current intern, is working really hard right now on three current work program items. In fact, we're going to be meeting this afternoon on two of those. And so I think that kind of talks a little bit about their role. You know, they provide great assistance to the planning staff, to me and to our department. The board did take action last week to promote one of the planners into the, as an interim director. So this person, whoever it might be, will be taking on the duties of the director position as well as the planner position. They'll still be, need to take on some casework and have some oversight with the planning intern. So we tried to put together some information on the funding amount. This is not a budget request. We realized that if the board supports these two individual requests, that we would need to come back and request a budget amendment. But the board did approve funding for the current planning intern for $9,570 for the fiscal year, current fiscal year. If the additional hours are approved, which would be to increase from 15 to 20, it would be an additional $2,090 approximately. And if the second intern position, which we're viewing this as a temporary position just to assist with this interim process, it will also give the new director, whoever that might be, some assistance in, you know, working towards being successful and completing the various projects that we're taking on. And so that amount would be around $6,820 for a total of $8,910. Again, that's an approximate amount based on, again, increasing the current planning intern position from 15 to 20, and then asking for a new position during this academic school year of up to 20 hours through the end of June, this current fiscal year. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So Jerry, when you say permanently expand the current internship program and take the current intern from 15 hours a week to a maximum of 20 hours a week, you're talking about permanently or you're talking about for this fiscal year?
It would be permanently. And so again, the intern works full-time, 40 hours a week, June, July, August, the middle of August, and then transitions into the school year with up to 15 hours currently. And we're asking to increase the hours during the academic school year from 15 to 20.
So can I just summarize it as saying that the increase from 15 to 20 hours is to help with the current workload? And then the additional intern is simply because there's going to be a vacancy and you do a lot of planning work as director?
I'd say that's a good way to put it. It's a good assessment.
Okay, thank you.
So Jerry, I have a question. So what is kind of the learning curve or what do you have someone on to understand what's going on in the department? And I ask that with this new, potential new planner position. You bring someone on now, there's going to be a time that they're going to have to know what's going on in the office, how that all works. And I know you're saying that you're looking at this just through the end of this fiscal year, so from now till the end of June. I'm just wondering, what's kind of the startup time to get acclimated, know all the projects, and how that new person then would help potentially either interim director or what's in front there, the new director in place?
And a related question might be of Sandra King. I don't know what the timeline is for hiring a planning and development director, and it might be nice to know what you're seeing now in terms of when you think you'll have somebody on staff.
Interviews are tomorrow, so.
No, that's the interim.
Oh, I think she asked if there's.
The permanent position. You don't have a timeline yet?
I expect November.
Pardon?
November is what I'm.
But you have somebody on board?
Yeah, this is Jerry. In terms of like the new planning intern, our talent pool has been Iowa State University for the most part. We have been very, very fortunate in being able to have a really good pool of candidates to choose from. We also have had a candidate, or actually an intern, from the University of Iowa. So it's been amazing how quickly they learn about our system. You know, usually at least a few weeks to kind of get an idea as to, you know, how we do things here, but we've always made it clear that it's a very comprehensive role that they're going to. that they're going to be taking on, that they're going to learn a lot about a lot of different things, and they're going to be able to experience what it's like to be a county planner. Because they work directly with the planners, they work directly with me, you know, doing work inside the confines of the building and doing work outside, doing the field research. So we've been very, very fortunate with the candidate pool. And that's another thing. We have a really, really good relationship with the Chair in the Community and Regional Planning Department at Iowa State. And I think that's something that the new director, whoever that person might be, should continue to pursue that. Because of that relationship, we've been invited to participate in things like, you know, participating in their accreditation process that they went through a few years ago, which was, I think, very rewarding. But yeah, it doesn't take that long. There's a lot of interaction on a day-to-day basis with myself, at least the way that I did things, and with our planning staff. And they catch on very quickly. And they really provide a really great niche, I think, for our staff. And it translates into the end product that we're providing.
I don't think you heard me. I've been asking you this for about the last minute. Because I don't think you answered Supervisor Ed's question. So I'm going to ask her if she wants to restate it.
Sure, sure. So what I was trying to figure out, Jerry, is thank you. I was asking how long they get acclimated. That wasn't part of my question. The other part I was trying to figure out is how does this new person come in and then kind of do the, where you said it kind of helped with the training or whatever of the new director? How does that come into play if that's a new person? I'm trying to figure that out. Or are you looking at the current intern that would take on that role, and a new intern would then take on those person's responsibilities? I'm a little confused by how you initially stated the need for this particular position and how that would help a new interim or the new director? Do they be new themselves?
Well, again, I mean, if you just look at the number of hours that I put in, which averages probably 55-plus. The interim director, which is going to be one of the planners, is going to take on the director's position role. And so there's a lot of administrative things that that person's going to need to deal with. Plus, they're going to need to do the work of a planner. And we have enough things going on that just increasing the internship hours from 15 to 20 is likely not going to be enough to fill the void. So without a new position, you're going to probably have the existing staff working many more hours than what they're accustomed to. And I think if you look at over the last few weeks, we've had, I think they opt for comp time instead of overtime. And they put in a request for comp time. It waivers depending on the caseload. But I think, consistently since I've been here, there's no way that I could do this job from 8:00 to 5:00. I take things home, I work on weekends. You know, and to be honest with you, I mean, I've been really focusing a lot on just the case level load. And what we're taking on is much more than just the caseload. We're getting a lot of inquiries from developers, from the general public, wanting to know what they can do with their property. They want to know about divisions, they want to build certain things. And it takes a lot of time and research. It's amazing how much time we spend looking at old ordinances compared to the current ordinances to figure out, you know, the status of, you know, lot configurations or parcel configurations to make sure that they're compliant.
Just one more follow-up question then. Is this new position that you're looking at, creating a new temporary planning intern position, essentially is the same as the current position? It's just you have enough work that you want to, that you need two people? Is that what you're saying?
He's not asking-
I would say- Yeah, go ahead.
I understand, not asking for the second position to be permanent, but there's enough work that you want another intern? Because you have one planning and development intern position, you're looking at another one, but to be temporary?
We're going to be a few months starting budget hearings. And I think that may be the more appropriate time to talk about what is needed for the workload. I'm seeing the second intern position, the one that you're creating, you're asking us to create that isn't there now. I'm seeing the rationale for that as being because there's not going to be a director. There's going to be an interim director, but that's going to be one of the current staff. So Sandra just said she's going to have a new director hired in November. Is it going to take, so the second intern is because, first, there isn't a director in the position, and maybe, second, to give that new director a chance to get on their feet, understand, you know, get acclimated to the position. I don't see seven or eight months of the intern as being necessary if that's the purpose.
Well, and one thing to focus in is we have a work program with 25 items. You know, with the COVID-19 and the duration that we spent, I don't know, a month trying to deal with, you know, there's no way we're going to get all of the items completed. This new position would definitely be able to help us to complete those items which are critical. Half of these things are implementation requirements from the comp plan. And then half of them are requests from previous planning and zoning commission members, requests from the Board, and items that the staff has brought forward. So I definitely think we would have enough work to keep a new planning intern busy through June.
I haven't spoken up so far. I'm probably more on Jerry's side here. Given the fact that there will be a new planning and development director who will be drinking from his or her own fire hose, okay? Plus, the amount of projects that have been pushed to the side for 2020 due to the pandemic and the duration. I think we've got a unique set of circumstances here. I also think about if somebody is going to do an internship, right? Especially if it's a grad student internship, right, Jerry, most likely?
Pardon me?
It's most likely a graduate student?
It can be. Sometimes it's an undergrad. Like Amelia, she was a grad student. We were busy enough and we were able to create a position.
Okay.
And she had great skill.
Okay. Thank you. So back to, I think most people are looking at an internship to help out here, even though we think it'll only be a month until we have a P and D person on board. Remember when we had a similar discussion here a week ago or something? Lisa pointed out, but what if it ends up being six months, right? So I feel that where we are financially right now, where we're not rolling in money, but we would be able to accommodate a second position for seven or eight months, given the unique set of circumstances. But whatever you two want to do, I mean, you know, obviously. Okay, but that would be by argument, kind of backing up how unique this is right now.
I see there's also a new director coming in, and I can see a reality of a new director that we're going to hire needing some time to get on their feet. I also would like to see the new director bring her or his budget recommendations to the supervisors next spring. And I want to keep this separate. I think we're dealing with a temporary situation. We're dealing with the workload to some ways. Mostly, we're dealing with temporary vacancy in a position right now. And that's what we should be looking at, not doing a full budget hearing right here and now about the workload of the planning and development department. That's just my concern. I would go for six months, but I would not go through the end of fiscal year.
Hi, Board. I just wanted to add that I did ask Jerry to include the second intern, because that was my understanding, but that is what came up at last week's discussion. And I thought that he was the more appropriate person to present that because he knows what his hours have been as the director, sort of working around the clock to try and keep the department afloat because it is short-staffed right now. And of course, that vacancy is just going to add to that.
I'd like to see some comparisons during the budget hearing of our staffing with other counties and workloads, quite frankly. And that's what convinces me is looking at comparables.
So I guess my point about too is, you know, we're going to have an interim director. Don't know if it's going to be an external or internal person who will be in there or who's applied, because I haven't seen who's all applied for those positions. If it is somebody who is internal, who's going to be an interim for instance?
Oh, it is going to be internal. We cleared that. We discussed that afterwards.
Oh, that's right. We did. I'm sorry. Yes, we did. We did, but we missed that it's going to be applied. So yes, yes. If they're in that director's position, I'm kind of playing devil's advocate here. They're in that devil's, in that position, there are some things that they were currently doing are probably not going to be able to do to the level that they were doing if they're taking on the director's responsibility. So then you leave that hole in there. Who's going to make up some of that stuff so that we continue to provide a level of service? I get that. The increase of the 15 to 20 hours, I totally understand that, or up to 20 hours. Understand that. It's the second position that I try to look at. Is there that need for that short-term basis? I hear exactly what you're saying, Jerry. And remember, the temporary director, is there going to be added workload on the other individuals there? Because internally, it's going to be on the director's responsibility.
Another thing I'd like to throw out, we had a conversation, Lisa and I, just kind of laughably the other day about start times for various positions and various elected officials, and how it's really tough to be a new elected official, right, on January 1, because you get hit with the budget right away. This new director, if they're hired in November or December, given, remember, we're heading into the holiday season here. Things change in a, in a, well, the interim, yeah. Okay. Is that, well, we may be in a situation where there's not, that person's not having a lot of time because of other people scheduling time off, you're trying to get ready for those budgets. Right now, they're starting to crunch numbers for the budget. I just feel that I'd rather set this department up for success here over the next few months instead of stressed out, I'm not going to say failure, but definitely increasing that risk. Because we're heading into the time where department heads and interrungs and staff themselves, everybody starts.
Yeah. Looks like Alyssa has some thoughts.
Yeah, I just want to note that there's a lot of discussion that this new internship position could fill that gap until that new director. It's going to take probably until mid-November before you have that second intern on board with posting. So I think if the Board wants to consider that, it's more for the workload moving forward, not necessarily, you know, Sandra's hopeful to have somebody on board probably late November, if all goes well. Now, we learned that sometimes recruitments don't go well. But the intern, you know, I will say we still have a hire increase. So when this came to me last Thursday night, I didn't even think about having Jerry add the exception. So we will need that on next Tuesday if the Board approves that new position. And then they have to post for a minimum of 10 days. So the reality is, and interim would probably start in the beginning of November, by the time we get all the free employment screening, the background check, the drug screening, stuff like that done, it will take a little bit of time to do that, depending on how many applicants they have. One thing to consider too with bringing interns on from Iowa State, my understanding is they are getting done early?
Early.
Early? You know, it just depends. If we get somebody local, that would be great. They could start. We just don't know who's going to-
Not helping from January.
It just depends. You know, there's a lot of factors that we just don't know. I know, at least for me, we've held off on our intern just for some of that reason. But I think if the Board wants to look at that, I think what Jerry really wants with that second intern is he really feels his staff has enough work, and they're not moving forward the rest of the fiscal year, doing that analysis, you know, do they need another planner? You know, getting that stuff put together. The second intern will kind of give them that data. But that's where I think the second intern comes into place, not necessarily to fill that two-to-three-week gap. I don't know if that's really realistic.
Yeah.
But I think moving forward, if they do have all those projects, it would help us to get them the data to come to the Board.
Additional set of hands during a transition.
Yes. And then they could come and say, hey, we, our intern put in this many hours during the budget work session. We really are understaffed for our planning staff. I think that's a great way to find that data.
But I still would encourage the, you know, in this budget hearings, I'm still going to encourage that we've got comparables from other counties.
No, we usually do them when they request.
Yeah. And I haven't seen that before from planning and development. We've talked about workloads. So I just don't want this to be seen as the Board has said, okay, to have another FTE there, we just need to move it from being an intern to a planner or have two interns all the time.
No, I don't think that's, and I don't think that was being asked by the department at all. I think they're looking for, yeah.
I was confused because so much of it was about workload as opposed to the vacancy in the position.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Alyssa. I appreciate that. So what's the pleasure of the Board here?
I have now. Yep. Well, I am with the motion. I would move to approve increasing the academic year hours from 15 to 20. And then I would also approve a new temporary planning position.
Intern?
Intern. Planning intern, yeah. Intern planning position, however that should be phrased, for the rest of fiscal year '21.
I will second that. Question, is the second intern also 20 hours a week then?
At 20 hours a week. I believe that's what Jerry said, up to 20 hours a week. As presented.
Yeah, this is Jerry. We are asking for that second position to be up to 20 hours a week during the academic year.
So I would amend it to say up to 20 hours per week with that second.
I second that.
Okay. And I just ask because I did not-
Yeah, you're right.
-see that in the, okay. Okay, then, Edens?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Board.
Is to bring a hiring exception form to next Tuesday's Board meeting. And that will finalize this.
Second, Board.
Has anybody talked between marketing and the budget?
Well, what Jerry's memo said was that we could alternately, and it may be, I don't know if we need to do that. I didn't see this as increasing the budget because we said that it could be probably accommodated through the vacancy of the director position.
We just want to double-check those figures because there's vacation payoffs. It depends on how long the vacancies is. Like, just want to make sure they're watching that. And they don't have to do it now, but just make sure Lisa's aware of it.
Would you please do that?
I'll touch base.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, are there any other things done or we have that now? Jerry, going on to your next item? Boy, you're having a, if you're last week here.
Yeah.
Oh.
So the next item is regarding a request to change from PayPal to the Portland credit card payment processing through CitizenServe.
Yes, correct. Thank you, Board, for your consideration of this next item. On the 14th of July, the Board did approve the use of PayPal as our credit card payment processor for customers to submit permits through CitizenServe. After we went live with that, we quickly learned that there were inconsistencies in the billing compared to the actual permit fees. And two, also equally as important is we learned that their fees, which is the 2.9% of the permit cost and the 30 cents per transaction, those are put on- 2.9% of the permit cost and the 30 cents per transaction, those are put on the, on the business account. So in this case, they were put on Story County to take care of those fees. And that's not what our understanding was. And so we worked with our consultant through, with CitizenServe to try to program that so that the fees would be put on the customer. And there were several attempts made at it which were not successful. So that prompted us to disconnect the automatic credit card payment processing portion. And Stephanie, since that time, has taken, has taken requests for use of credit card payments over the phone. She's done that using Heartland as our processor. We also accepted, or have been accepting, checks sent to us in the mail. We also allowed customers to use our drop-off box here at the admin building. And we've met people outside the front of the building to drop off payments. The treasurer's office is very supportive in us using Heartland as the payment processor for CitizenServe. We used Heartland before implementing CitizenServe. The auditor's office, the treasurer's, and the sheriff's office, in addition to the environmental health department, use Heartland. And the treasurer's office is very happy with the services that they provide. They have a relationship with the representatives from the company. Their fees, Heartland's fees per transaction are, I think, the lowest of the, I think there's 20 companies that CitizenServe has integrated into their system. So their per-transaction cost of 2.25%, I think, is the lowest compared to many of these other companies that they've transitioned or integrated into their system. We provided some cost difference information compared to PayPal with zoning permits, conditional use permits, zoning permits for single-family homes. In all cases, again, with the use of Heartland, the per-charge will be less. There's no annual or monthly fee. An important point to note is that the technical experts with Citizen Serve and Heartland are meeting this week. Our representative did an initial review of the API, which is Application Programming Interface. And he is thinking that it will accommodate Citizen Serve's needs, and he's, he's thinking that there won't be this integration fee because, again, this is why we recommend it as a department for the board to support the use of PayPal to avoid having to pay this Citizen Serve integration fee of $5,000. But again, this rep has looked at it initially, and he's thinking that, that, that 5,000 integration fee will not be needed if, after they meet this week in discussions with Ted Rassison, he has agreed to come back to the board to request monies for this integration. Again, initially, it was a $5,000 fee, and it's looking like that will not be necessary with this change to Heartland. So I'd be happy to answer your question.
Okay, Jerry, it's Flores, and I want to go to that $5,000 fee. All right?
Okay.
We were told there was a $5,000 fee, and we were told the PayPal fee, okay? You're saying you were told that the consumer was paying the PayPal fee, correct?
Well, yeah. I mean, that's, I think, based on our assessment of their marketing information, that we could pass that on to the customer, and that's not how they're set up. So our representative at Citizen Serve tried to, with their staff, tried to program it so that it would charge the customer, and they were not successful in doing that. So.
Go back here. Yes or no, were you told by Citizen Serve that the pay, the fee was going to PayPal? Or the PayPal fee was being paid by the, the consumer? Were you told that?
Yeah, I don't think we were told by Citizen Serve.
So where I'm headed with this, all right? Now, somebody at Citizen Serve then is saying they think we won't have to pay a $5,000 fee. All right?
Right. Based on, based on their assessment of this API.
All right. You have that in writing.
Pardon me?
You have that in writing, or will you get that in writing, that we're not owed the $5,000 fee? And I see Ted up here, but I'm headed for a very specific point here.
Sure. Yeah. And again, this is going to be based on the meeting that these technical representatives are going to have this week to, to go over this. But, and I'm just passing on. Go ahead.
We did not get good information the first time, Jerry. So before you ask us to make good, to make a change again, I think it's fair to get us good information, real information about this $5,000 fee. Because five, what, the whole point here is there's 11 cents we're losing per transaction. That's the whole point. That, when I did a quick math, is something like 32,000 transactions. So you can hear the irritation in my voice. You're right. Nobody's heard this.
Flores, I think you're, you're not, you're not doing sufficient math. It's not about the 11 cents. What happened was, last July, our office kind of recommended to Jerry that we would like him to stay with Heartland. He went to the board with the option of Heartland or PayPal. We said we would try to do our best to work with either, and we were open to working with PayPal. At the time, Citizen Serve said that they would charge us $5,000 to set up Heartland as our pay partner. They would not charge us to set up PayPal because they had already set up PayPal for other customers. What happened was when we went live, PayPal created all kinds of issues. They couldn't charge correctly. So basically, our ordinance says that we have to collect $100. The way Heartland is set up in the treasurer's office is it charges $100 plus $2.25 for their 2.25% fee or charge. The way PayPal was set up is it would charge the customer $100 and then take out their $2.95 so that Story County was left with only $97.25. So we weren't charging what we planned to with our ordinances technically. At that point, Citizen Serve tried to do some math on their backend to make this all work out. They couldn't do it. Now, where this gets, where I say you, you aren't kind of accounting for all of the costs, is we had Lisa Markley and Artie Baldwin and Stephanie Jones from the Planning and Development Office spend approximately, I would guess, with Stephanie's time, 60 to 80 hours to remedy the accounting issues that this created. In Story County, we always have and we always intend to balance to the penny. To balance to the penny, we have to account for every single bit of what we're supposed to get and what we actually receive. To make all of the accounting work for the month of August, we spent, I would guess, close to 100 hours of, of time between me and Jerry talking, between everybody doing everything, between us trying to fix this issue. That right there, at $50 an hour for people time and building time and everything, is our $5,000. I think that if we continue to try to work with PayPal, we're going to have to do a lot of accounting fixes on the end. And that's just time to make the accounting fixes work. That's not necessarily including the, some of our issues that we'll face with, you know, talking to the state auditors every year about why we're losing 11 cents here and 11 cents there and 11 cents there. We're going through an audit right now, and I don't want to have to explain all these little tiny microtransactions that are, that are hurting us. So, I guess, what, what happened in the last week or so is that we, we reached out to Heartland again, and we reached out to Citizen Serve, and both representatives said that they would look into the other representative and see if this is something that could be an easily compatible configuration. So in other words, if Heartland has worked with a customer like Citizen Serve before and they are set up in the exact same way, they would not charge us any fee. Or vice versa, if Citizen Serve has worked with a customer like Heartland and, you know, I guess the best way to put it is, you know, when you go to Europe or another country and you have to have a different plugin for your hairdryer or your curler, if the, if the two softwares have that converter already in their bag to convert, they won't charge us anything. But neither can guarantee us that. So that's why we don't have that in writing yet. They're meeting, we're going to try to get them together this week and see if it will be no fee or if it will possibly still be a fee. So that's what we're, neither I nor Jerry can really guarantee how that meeting is going to go. Both of them have to kind of just sit down and, and look at it for a couple minutes and figure it out. Unfortunately, I don't think either of us have a, a, a good enough background in coding and in integrations to really know any idea of whether that will come out looking good for us at $0 or if it will still incur the, the integration fee.
I have one question.
Thank you, Ted.
Yep. Ted, I have one question.
You're welcome.
Is that 5,000, that integration fee or that potential 5,000, is that just a one-time fee?
Yeah.
Or is that, it's not a?
Once we set that up, that, that'd be a one-time $5,000 fee. And then where the treasurer's office would appreciate that is now we're going back to where we were with all of the various other entities that use credit cards, giving us a report from Heartland. It makes our balancing a lot easier and smoother. It makes our deposits from Heartland a lot smoother. We already have that relationship and that account. It's just really setting up that, it's setting it up so it works well when somebody is on Citizen Serve that they can enter their credit card information and Heartland can process it. So that's the connection that has to be made.
So what we did before is we went with PayPal rather than Heartland to try to save the $5,000. We don't always know what's going to happen when we implement something, and, and it didn't work. And not only are we not getting the customer paying the money, we're paying the money, which is like a double loss, and the staff time. So we still may, we can go to Heartland, we may or may not have to pay the $5,000. And it'd be nice to get it done quickly and get out of this mess.
Yeah. I think that's ultimately the, the stance I took when, when Jerry and I kind of worked through it was $5,000, when compared to the amount of time on the backend for us to clean up, it's definitely worth making the transition. Hopefully, we don't have to pay that, but even if we do, we think it's worth the $5,000.
If we do, then we say, gee, that's too much. We really don't have any great options, and Heartland seems to be the better option. So. What I'm seeing.
It seems, it seems to work pretty smooth for all the other areas that use it.
Okay. So, any other questions?
No. I, I just want to express that, you know, because this Citizen Serve was originally approved, what, 19 months ago or something? I mean, this has been a while. So my frustration is because of, for a $31,000 program, it sounds like the amount of time that various departments have had to put in from a payroll standpoint is, that's right. That's the way to do the accounting here, is it's cost us much more. Okay? But, so I guess next time we go for something like this or an apartment house or an office is maybe asking more questions of the other people who are using the program, maybe, you know, maybe, as we would have spotted that. But no more. Thank you, Ted, for the explanation.
You're welcome.
Jerry for the explanation, letting me be frustrated about it. Now we'll move forward. Yeah, entertain a motion.
It's my turn. I so move that we authorize the staff to go back to using Heartland for processing the general public's credit card payments for zoning permits, development case applications, and related items on Citizen Serve.
Is that?
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, Olsen.
Aye.
Edens?
Aye.
Merkin? Aye. Approved. Thank you very much. Next, we have Planning and Development, quartering report.
Yeah, I'll just provide a little background. For the most part, we're, we're holding steady with the previous year's third quarter. We are down one in terms of like zoning permit applications. We're up one in terms of development case applications. When you look at that drawing that shows where all the zoning permits are located, it's spread out throughout the county, which is nice to see. However, the majority of the permits that we received or issued is on the south half of the county. I, I think we're very proud of the work that we've done with getting the vegetative debris site up and going. That was a countywide effort with a lot of other involvement with emergency management, assistance from the board, several other departments. And internally, I think we worked on that for a solid four weeks straight. And activity level, last week, I looked at the, the usage logs, and we had one day where there was 10 loads, I think eight another and five another. Last weekend, we had five. And we're still getting people who are expressing interest in using it. They're, they're telling me when I'm working on Saturdays that they still have more material to cut up, and they want to know how long we're going to be there. And so my message has been that tentatively, we're still planning on through the month of October. In terms of like case work, we just received the submittal for Prairie Valley, so that'll be the final permit, or the final subdivision submittal, which will be before the, the board here shortly. We've got one rezoning request submitted by Key Co-op. They're proposing a rezoning east of Zering for a new grain elevator. The grain elevator that was located inside the city of Zering was damaged due to the derecho. So they're looking for a new site just east of the city, I think within a half a mile. And we're working on two conditional use permits for the city of Nevada and the city of Cambridge for their wastewater treatment plant. Nevada's building a new plant, and Cambridge is doing improvements to theirs. And we're also working on the prep work for the adoption of the new countywide floodplain maps, which go into effect January 15 of 2021. And lastly, we're working on the transition plan, which, again, this is going to be a, a department-wide effort. We've been working pretty diligently on things that need to be addressed before my departure again on October 9. So is there any questions?
Thank you, Jerry.
Jerry, I just want to say a couple things. I want to thank you for all the work that you've done with Story County throughout the years here. And particularly, I want to thank you on the fast work that you did on the debris site for the derecho. I know that was a big challenge, and you were kind of pushed to do something quick because people are, people are piling brush in the ditches and the right-ofways and thinking something's going to happen with it. And I've heard a lot of people who've been very grateful that the county did that. First time we've done that. But I think it's a good service to the community, and I really want to thank you and your staff for your flexibility, and you're getting on to that very quickly. We're going to miss you here. Just wanted to say that for the record. And we wish you well in your new position in a nice warmer climate, but watch out for the sea level rise.
For sure. For sure.
Yeah. Thank you for all your work, Jerry.
Yes, thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, board. I greatly appreciated working here. It's been the best job. It's been the best job that I've ever had. And we've got a great staff, and I'm confident that they're going to take our department to the next level. And I just want to say too, that I've appreciated the support from the board, from Sandra, from Alyssa, and the many great department directors and staff and elected officials. There's no way that we could accomplish half of what we've accomplished without their support in assisting us. So it's been a good five years, and I will miss all of you.
See you before you leave, Jerry. Take care. We'll head on now. Other reports, we have a discussion of direction to staff to compel amendments to the urban renewal plan. LeAnn Herter.
Before you, this morning, and now it's afternoon, I did place a couple of items. I won't take a lot of time, I just want to, this is a preview to what will come officially next week. Two, three weeks ago, you received, you had presentations from the applicants. We received four applications from Ames, Cambridge, Story City, and Zering. What I am asking the board today is just some guidance on what projects would you like to see tentatively included in your official item next week, so that I can prepare the draft to bring it before you next week. I do want to note one change. I caught this this morning and verified it with John Hall with Ames Chamber Commerce. The amount requested in your application, they put $23,359. It should actually be $20,359. I was doing the math again this morning and caught that that's, the amount didn't, it was at 75% mark. I'm like, there's something wrong with this again. So the corrected schedule you have is that it shows that $20,000. And I do have the email that'll attach with John, with the application. I also just, if you wanted to have an update, I provided a sheet that has red and green colorings. This is the list by community, by calendar year, of projects awarded. In green are the proposed projects that were submitted for this year. And then the last column on that would be if they were approved at the amount. Just so you could see overall where the county has been for funding projects, right around the 1.4 billion, really into 1.5 billion, if all four projects are approved this year. I'll be glad to answer any questions on the projects, but again, it's to get some guidance on kind of the nuts and bolts of what you will get next week for official action. Next week, we'll discuss an direction on the plan, and then the resolution setting the public hearing, and then direction to go ahead and get all the information out on the website.
So next week is pretty much informal, because we're telling you what you want to know to put on a plan, to do it. So really, have we done this in the past, where we had two weeks in a row?
Yeah.
Okay, don't remember this. Okay, thank you.
I don't think we did it that way last year.
No, we didn't?
No, it was a few years ago. It just kind of, it works a lot better from my perspective.
Yeah, okay.
And it will help facilitate your discussion next week, too.
Well, I think we're going to have a discussion today. So I propose that we change Main Street Town and Center revitalization to an amount, well, not requested, but that we will fund $1,000, $13,300, or $200. Okay? What I've done is I've gone in, I've taken out all of those temporary replaceable items, okay, from the application that I commented before. We've not funded tables and chairs in the past. We did fund some cigarette receptacles. But I'm just not comfortable in enough where we're starting to go ahead and actually issue debt to pay for tables and chairs. I went through our entire, the county's entire project list here, and I have found where there was, there were, City of Collins, that if you still have the list that LeAnn handed out back in September, does show additional equipment purchases. Those equipment were large, heavy, specialized workout machines, et cetera, for the Collins Wellness Center. So I don't consider them as being as disposable, easily breakable, et cetera. And this is an economic development grant, all right? Then, we did Story City. We did give Boulevard Gateway signage, new benches, those benches are bolted to the cement, okay, they're more permanent. Did say trash receptacles there. And the other, then we gave them bike wraps, building lights. And that one, I guess I just missed, because I did bolted this, I'll tell you that. And then history plaques. So we gave plaques, we gave, for the most part, permanent things, with the exception of trash receptacles and building lights. This time, and that was a very, very small percentage, dollar amount of the ask. This ask for the Main Street and Town Center revitalization, of that $27,000, only $13,200 is for things that could be considered permanent. That would be the mural, the painting of the mural. That would also be the street directional signs. I'm trying to open up right now my... There we go, to take a look at. So I took out, what I took out of the request were the, I'm sorry, my computer is taking this particular moment to do something weird, okay? So anyway, so I left in the cigarette receptacles. I did leave them in because I believe that they were more permanent quality, I believe. I left in the artist stipend of $4,500. I left in the directional signage, and I left in the mural itself. So that came up to $13,200. I personally, I feel that I cannot go for the, to pay for a table and chair set, a table, chairs, umbrellas, umbrella stands. I think those are permanent, those are transient-type items, they can muck off, they can break, they should be part of what is of the cost of Main Street. Where those other items, I believe, I'm going to go with the faith that they're sturdy enough, they're attached, and we can at least justify that they did it, especially when we're, like I say, we're bonding for this money, or borrowing this money. We're borrowing, not bonding, borrowing the money. And repaying it tentatively over 10 years, and there should be some permanence involved with it. So that's my first thing. The second one is, is totally removing the Cambridge Center backup generator. That is not infrastructure. That is part of what their responsibility is in their building maintenance. So those are the two items that I would say that we remove. So therefore, they ask, if you take those two things out, because I'm totally 100% with Story City, and totally 100% with Zering. Those are exactly what the grant was designed for. So let me read it here. 41465, okay. I'm adding up right now, plus 20... I came up with 41475, maybe I touched something in there. Mm-hmm. Plus...
Okay, well, they're doing math, Supervisor Hens, do you have any thoughts?
65, yes. So I was fine as well with Zering and Story City. I did have some questions in regards to Cambridge one, because the application does say that it's under communication and utility infrastructure expansion. And I could not recall the, and LeAnn, you may have that, the criteria under communication, or that the structure of communication or utility infrastructure expansion. Do you recall that?
Unfortunately, we don't have set criteria for each of the categories, definition. That's what led us to bring forward to the board, if you were to consider policy amendments. But in the past, it has been...
Cambridge got streetlights.
Yeah.
So did Story City, that streetlight. Infrastructure expansion, according to the list, as I kind of circled some of them here, has to do with water looping.
Sure.
Okay, right? So it has to do with that, it has had to do with urban gutter, okay? It's had to do with real, long-term physical infrastructure, all right? And while the generator may be rated for 30 years, once again, it's something that is their responsibility to do, or get an emergency management grant for. It's, how does it help economic development? Long-term, permanent economic development, and again, why would we justify to the taxpayers to be, to going ahead and borrowing money to pay for that? Because that's what we're doing with tip.
Right, no, I don't disagree with that. I just could not find a specific descriptor for utility, and that's why I asked the energy had something to do with it.
Yeah, here's, City of Cambridge, we gave them for utility relocation in the past.
Sure, sure.
See, I can see a nexus between stable government operations, stable public safety operations, and a business wanting to relocate to a community.
But it's not a generator for the business. It's not a generator to generate power.
I'd say there's a nexus between a government having good services, having stability, and a business being willing to locate in a community. That's what I was saying, that's what I said. I don't, I see a lot of, and I guess I look at this, and I can see how you can see, an Interstate 35 business sign fits right in with economic development and all that. But I look at adding some, and I'm just using this as a comparison, I don't have any problem with Story City's request, but I'm looking at gussying up a sign versus providing a generator. And, you know, you may say there's more of a direct, more of a direct connection between a sign and economic development, and I'm not sure. I think that a generator fits into, with a small community, with a new city center that has, you know, services in it that employees would use for this. I just see a nexus there, I don't have any problem with it.
So, so, because you're going to talk with a real square foot rule here, too.
And what do we call John Hall saying, is that they would be securing the tables and the chairs.
I don't know how they do that. John, are you going to put those up on Main Street? Those tables and chairs are going out on Main Street? How are you going to secure those permanently?
Yeah, so, good afternoon, Board. So I think there may be some question on it, in part because of the restriction on the number of words that I could use to describe the project. So these tables and chairs are not going to be like event tables and chairs where they're brought out and taken down for special events or things like that. What they're intended to be are cafe-style tables and chairs to add to seating downtown. Now, while, you know, the benches are tended to be a more permanent, a fixed facility, we see that the umbrellas are probably going to have to come down every night. We'll be partnering with businesses to make sure they're coming down and going back up. As well as during the winter, we will look to take down the tables and chairs, move them inside to actually make them last longer. In terms of fixing them down, we're working through, it depends on where we're going to deploy them to ultimately throughout the downtown. But, you know, many businesses have outdoor options, and it'll be similarly to that, where it'll be, whether it's got a cable and ties it down, or those sorts of options will be what we're looking at. It's not intended to sit on a foundation and be bolted to the ground, but it is intended to be more cafe-style seating that isn't intended for special event use. It's designed to be out there to provide an alternative outdoor seating option.
So John, realistically, do you think it's fair to take on debt, to pay for little cafe chairs and tables, realistically, for the taxpayers of all of those different ways and money or whatever? Because that's what we'll be doing, we'll be taking on 10-year for debt to pay for these things.
Supervisor Olson, I am not a supervisor, so I cannot speak to that. That's for you to decide. What I can do is I can relay the stress and strain that our businesses, and in particular our restaurants, are under in our downtown area. Many restaurants throughout the state are finding new spaces to add outdoor dining with limitations of space in our downtown. Ours do not have as many options as many other places do. So I'm looking for any opportunity I can to support our retail businesses, which are ultimately contributing to sales tax to our community and improving our quality of life. I absolutely believe that this is a good use of economic development resources for an effort like this.
Thank you, John. Supervisor Hens, do you have any questions, John?
No, I don't right at the moment. I'm kind of reading through his application again, and I've read it like 50 times, just kind of reading it again. I get it, you know, I understand what Supervisor Olson is saying, too. John, I guess I do have a question. So John, with those tables and chairs in the evening set, they're not bolted down, as I believe some other benches and stuff downtown are, is that something that will be going inside each night as well, or will they be sitting outside?
The intention would be to leave them sitting outside, like many of our individual businesses currently have. So that was one of the questions that we had early on, was what's the feasibility for leaving these out? How unsecured can they be? And while we're intending to secure them, like I said, through some form of cable or whatever the options may be, we'll work with the city on this. Ultimately, the individual businesses have not had issues where these wires or bolts are being, or the wires or cables are being cut and things are being stolen. So we don't envision that that's going to be an issue, but it's something that we're keeping an eye on with our existing businesses and what they've been doing.
Thank you for that response there. Okay, any other questions? LeAnn, did you have any final comments you wanted to make in any of the applications?
Yeah, well, I was trying to find a, I couldn't find it on my phone. There was a study done a few years ago about the economic impact, and getting to your nexus question, behind hazard mitigation initiatives and planning and projects such as Cambridge's, and how it relates to economic development, the nexus between. And so when I find that, I'll shift to the board. It was done by the ATA, American Planning Association, a few years ago. And it goes back to the cornerstone sustainability, looking at three colors of environmental and social sustainability. So as an outsider looking in, if I were an outsider looking in, I could see where that nexus for the Cambridge, where that would make a nexus for the Cambridge application.
Can you repeat that again, Olson?
I could see where it would make that test of a nexus for that Cambridge application. That being said, going back to your question, whether or not we have clear definitions of each of the categories, we don't. If you look at the past projects, this is outside of that more infrastructure-related.
Kind of like the mulch, okay? You know, I mean, the mulch, remember the mulch that came out of the small, the little tiny, but it's like, at what point are you going to say, hey, you guys, this is your responsibility? Okay? Or this is outside of where, now we're back to, the mulch comes out of real cash, I mean cash dollars, it's out of the turbines, but it was out of the cash portion that we take, right? Just the dividing. This is, I'm just struggling, but this'd be my lifetime to vote on something like this. It'll be up to you guys and another supervisor sitting here, exactly how you're going to define economic development and how much you're going to pay. It's interesting that LeAnn has given us the, what everybody's gotten, okay? And taking a look at the various communities that have received a lot of money. And taking a look at the various communities that have received a lot of money. And so looking at Cambridge, Cambridge has received so far $200,000. So we have been very generous with Cambridge on buildings, right? Basically, buildings and the infrastructure, which all have been very solid, very clear projects, designed for sustainability, to attract businesses, to attract people to live in the community. I'm not sure we've seen a payoff on that yet, because sometimes economic development takes a long time. With Slater, a lot of street work. There's a lot of brick on streets done in Slater, okay? And they have been able to result in a couple new businesses on Slater. Story City, they've gone into the parks, and we know that Story City continues to have a robust economic development situation. So I guess that's part of when I've always looked at how this money is used, given, once again, that we were taking it from the school district, primarily the Colonesco. This is not, this is revenue that's not coming to, that's not going out in tax dollars to Colonesco School District for the most part. How do I explain to those people about why money's not coming to their school for their sub-projects, they can't use it operationally? But how do I explain that? Sorry, we took that money so we could pay for a generator for another community, so we could pay for tables and chairs for downtown Ames businesses. That's the question I ask, and that's what I'm asking.
You know, you're saying you don't know yet if any of these things have created economic development. I don't know how we could look at these kind of projects and say, because of this or that, Story City, or Cambridge, or whoever got the business. I don't think there's enough, I don't think there's enough, I mean, I think if we're saying this is economic development, this is going to help these communities, I think we're saying we hope it does. I don't think there's a way that we actually look at any of this and tie it to specific developments unless you can think of one.
Well, just kidding.
And I just don't.
We gave money to Maxwell. We've given money to Maxwell before. We've given money to Palins, okay? Both of those we're looking at. One was to maintain, really keep businesses downtown because they were going to be shut because of water, all right? You're right. Today, we can't say that because we only did it last year, but we may be able in two years from now.
But what I see looking at this spreadsheet is the communities get money but ask for money. There's some communities that don't ask very often.
Yeah, there's only been a couple of turns now for the entire time, right? Leanne, once because there were more applications and requests. Yeah, and some of that I think has to do with the match and the size of the project.
And I think, I know from my first year on the board, last year, I put out some financial proposals that were a reduction in each of the areas. Versus the total elimination, we reduced some of the funding in particular areas and stuff. So, you know, I look at, you know, various, I'm going to go to Ames right now, the town that's right in front of me, of, you know, kind of that beautification, does that draw people down to your place to go shopping? Oftentimes that, you know, your tables and chairs, those type of things can facilitate that. You know, I think European countries, for example, I was in France last year, and they have cafes with their tables and chairs outside, where people stop there, but it's all around a, shops all around there. So it does help facilitate folks to want to go to that particular area, and they're going to maybe, you know, have lunch or dinner or something because things are already provided. I recognize your concern on the tables and chairs and whether they are bolted down. I, yeah, my concern is, could that be walked off? Private business could afford that? This is, you're asking for taxpayer dollars to pay for them. So I recognize that.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Yeah, that, absolutely, that concern on there.
The umbrella and the umbrella stand, I don't think anybody could argue or deny it. I mean, if you've ever had a back, an umbrella on your back porch that has made it through three years, you've gotten good body or wear out of it. So, anyway.
Right, right, right. So when I was kind of looking at, at least at the Ames application, I, for me, I had a pause with the chairs and tables, but I was like, okay, I can see that just from different places I've been. I struggled with the umbrellas. That one was indifferent with the umbrella, new umbrella stand. I'm not saying that for sure that where I am with the tables and chairs, I'm just saying those, at least the sets with the umbrellas, I kind of struggled to see an economic development. They're a nice addition to have to your tables and chairs. They're not a requirement to have. But I do, as I said, I do have some concerns with the most taxpayer dollars. I appreciate, Lynda, what you said in regards to the generator for Cambridge. And that's why I asked the question, is I couldn't find anything that defined that utility infrastructure further. And I do think, as I'm finding, each year we're having to kind of go back and say, we need to relook at this, that we're more clear of what we are, what we're saying, or what are examples of what they could apply for. I look at some of their bullet points on there, you know, it's a nice city gathering, that it's nice for the economic development. That I don't see. I do say, look everywhere, it says, okay, but it does give you that multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan should there be an emergency? Then I kind of lean towards a yes, but is that really economic development? Or is that that one-time emergency where you look at other potential funding to put in? That's where I struggle with the Cambridge one, to the greatest, because I understand what they're trying to get, those emergency situations, you want to have something there. I'm struggling to see that as an economic development tool.
So, another way, because you asked, you know, Lynda's put it out or whatever, yeah, because a lot of these don't, they're not sitting on tax, they're not creating tax generation revenue, because that's very what tax, incremental financing is for. So my mother was a realtor for 20 by 30 years. I don't remember her ever conveying to me that she ever got asked once about what's the emergency operations for. That's right, okay. So, but I am looking at someone who's...
People should ask.
Huh?
People should ask.
Well, they should, but not everybody's astute, Lynda. I do want to point out, though, just my final one now, I guess I just had to, but there's been someone who, at least until just a couple minutes ago here, who has been listening in, I've seen her name several times up there on the screen, and she happens to work with housing, okay? And I know that I would rather put this money into housing. We don't have a housing proposal in front of us, but if I'm going to go ahead and go ahead and put debt on incremental financing, and then not have that money go to Colonesco Schools, if you will, a large chunk of it, then I'd rather put it into something permanent that does some kind of development, even if it's, say, lower-income housing or something. Because then, if it's not paying taxes, then at least the children are in communities, et cetera. I just don't, I just, that's where I am on it, so.
So you don't want to give out any of your renewal funds this year?
Yeah, I want to give $13,200 to Ames Main Street. And then they don't need any further match because that's $13,950 that they're going to have to come up with somewhere else, okay? $8,240 to Story City for improvements on their sign at their business park. And to Ziri, $20,025 for their large LED sign that will be shared with the Colonesco School District. So I come up with a total of $41,465.
How's that LED sign in economic development, I'm curious?
So I do view, is there things you can do in the community that help attract people to the community to possibly buy housing? Or to make investments into small businesses? And this community sign is like the one we funded last year for the Nevada Library. It puts out the announcements, it encourages community, it encourages, promotes events, both community events, and it can business if the city chooses to do that. So that is where, I guess, I stopped my broad definition of economic development. That's where I'm willing to expand into the community that attracts people to a community, right? Which is what Dagan's Lake was about, which is what Tedesco Learning Environment, Learning Center is about, right? If you're not going to actually put TIP money into income-producing down the road, then you need to look at where is the community, greater community good for having to borrow, having to go ahead and take on debt for that.
Are you making a motion?
I am. I move that we go ahead and instruct Leanne to bring back to us next week the draft that has the funding in the amount of $13,200 for the Main Street project, $8,240 for Story City project, the business sign, and $20,025 to Ziri, subject, of course, to the appropriate match money. Do you provide it?
Is there a second?
I'm not, because I want more discussion.
Motion fails.
I'll just let it, let it.
Motion fails for lack of a second.
So I guess, because I know that you want two-year numbers, I just didn't like the rest of this one to what we would make each. Number-wise, mine, and that's why I let it. So I had looked at, to Story City, at the $8,240, and Ziri, their full, at the $20,025. The sign, I felt like we set the precedent with the Nevada signage on that, and we're reaching for it, so that's why I felt comfortable with that. As I said, I struggled with Cambridge. I had like $0 to even have the amount on there because I didn't know what, I couldn't find the information to see what utility was, it wasn't defined enough. And I do think as we look along that that needs to. And I know, Laura, you said you had about $13,000 for Ames. I took out just the umbrellas, so I have a $15,544 is what I had.
So you had $15,544 for Ames, $0 for Cambridge, $8240 for Story and $2025?
Right, and I think I came to $43,809 if I did my math correctly. And again, I recognize the means of what Cambridge is saying. I'm just struggling to figure out, did that meet the definition of the utility?
Supervisors, if I may, I'm sorry, Supervisor Headens, did you say you took out just the umbrellas piece?
I did, I did.
Okay, I calculated that out to be $22,344 unless I missed something.
Oh, sorry, I was just looking, you may be, I'm sorry, I was looking at, not your match fund, I was looking at just your...
Oh, I apologize.
I was just looking at the one that the county would be doing, not with your...
I got $16,758, is that where you arrived?
I went from $20,359 minus, isn't it $48,15?
So, did you remove the entire amount for the umbrellas from the grant? So, let me clarify, if the umbrellas are not going to be part of the grant, we likely will not have the resources to do those, so we would remove that from the entire grant? So I'd remove it from the overall amount and then set up the match similarly.
I'm confused.
Yeah, I believe what John is saying is that he wants to remove it completely from the ask, adjust the total downward, and then multiply that by 75% to get what we would do, so that the 25% that they would have to come up, yeah. Is that correct, John?
Correct, correct, thank you.
What's your figure for the amount requested, John?
What I calculated out is $16,758.
And Leanne got back to, given the previous map there, so what's the total project cost then?
$22,344.
Okay, so we're just working with the amount that's been requested, okay? Is that...
Well, you're showing the total amount as well, so I get his question.
I know, Laura says, okay, but what I'm saying is, let's, us make our motion on the amount requested, not the total amount.
Requested from us?
Yes.
Right, so that's what I looked at. I recognize that, you know, summertime can be warm, having the umbrella would be nice. I just, that was just something that I kind of struggled with.
Okay, so we're just discussing, is there interest in $16,715 for Ames?
So, I'm just trying to figure out here, and I just want to make sure, if the tables are $6,000, and the 31-inch table is another $1,200, and the chairs are $1,800, that just quickly in my mind is eight, nine, that's $9,000 of the request right here, right? Okay? So I'm leaving those in, and then, so I'm just trying to figure out how we only came down between mine and that of $3,000. Something the math isn't matching. In my mind, it's not. But Ted did point out earlier that I wasn't doing my math right, so.
Let's leave it up to Leanne, she's...
Right.
Leanne, what do you think?
If you're saying, I think you're looking at two different sets of numbers too.
Right, I think we're two.
So if you just go by what was requested for funding from the city, from the application for Ames, and remove out whatever components, that is what should be considered, not the total project cost.
So are you in, are you in agreement with John on the $16,715?
That would be looking at the total project cost.
Yeah, okay, so you want to take it to what?
Well, there's two different numbers, there's, I can't remember what all you have taken out. But Lisa's is with, without the umbrellas, it's $15,544.
Okay.
And, Laura, I don't remember what exactly.
Oh, $13,200.
$1,200 is what you have.
Right, okay.
And actually, I can put the draft together with both those figures for you next week because it's a long sum. And the table at the end, when you look at the plan, it's a listing of the projects. The amounts are not included with the listing of the projects. There's a table that decides the lump sum.
So you're going with the lump sums of what, that you said together?
I can do both, the $15,544 and the $13,200.
Okay.
And then Story City and Ziri and that's requested.
Wouldn't it be easier if we just made a decision today, direction to you?
It's just a direction.
Okay, so all except for compromise, say, okay, Lisa's figure is a $15,544, okay? And that's, at least, the reasoning no longer, really temporary stuff, okay?
Okay, that's the direction, Leanne.
So to be clear, on my application, I am expected to raise the exact same amount of money while leveraging less from the county?
Uh, yeah, I mean, basically, we're telling you that some of these are, that we're not going to allow in there, okay? So you're supposed to still raise 25% of your project, so...
Correct, no, 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 I don't disagree about raising 25% of the project, which is why I did the recalculation to get $16,758.
Right, I get it, I got it done. I think what you're saying is your match level would go down because the overall budget, your budget portion from the county would go down.
Why don't we just do this? Why don't we just direct Leanne to take out of the total project cost, take out the umbrellas, rework the match amount based on that? That makes, we're sitting here and taking a lot of time over a very small amount of money. And that would simply be the way to do it, is say, take that cost out and then see what their match needs to be.
So the other way to look at it, John, is here's what we're willing to pay for. What else you want to do, as long as whatever we're saying on that list we're willing to pay for, you're paying 25% for. Anything else you've got in your project is, yeah, like an additional percentage match, if you will, but we're, I mean, yeah, but we're saying this is what we're willing to be 25% of, up to $15,544.
Your match will go down because your total project cost will go down.
Correct, yeah, that's what we're looking to do, is just maximize the utilization of these... Correct, we're, yeah, that's what we're looking to do, is just maximize the, the utilization of, of these resources in order to have the largest impact downtown. It's not to say that we may not come back and do the umbrellas, but that will have to be a separate fundraised piece, and I just didn't want that to be a committed to piece as part of this application if, if you guys weren't willing to, to be a partner on that at this time.
No, and I, yeah, I, I agree with what you're saying there, John.
All right, thank you, I appreciate that.
On that before we go on?
Yeah.
Okay. Leanne, excuse me, you have a direction you need for next week. Thank you very much. Next, we have Treasurer's update on September property taxes. Ted Rasmussen?
Hello, Leanne.
Hi, Ted.
Hello, so, um, while we were waiting, I typed all this so you guys wouldn't have to write the numbers down, so. If you want to look in the chat, here are our numbers. I'll go through them with you and explain them quickly. So these numbers are through the end of the day yesterday. We got, we only had about three or four, I think we had four tax bills this morning. So, um, we did not get a lot this morning. So through, through yesterday afternoon, we had billed $82,330,727.90. We had received in payments $79,766,160.25. That left an outstanding balance of $2,564,567.65. So through the end of September, we're at 96.885% paid. So we're doing pretty well. There were 1,600 delinquent properties. We are printing off statements of delinquent tax statements, and we will be mailing those out today. So typically, when we do those, we get about half or a little over, sometimes a little over of what was outstanding paid. People just kind of need a reminder, or some people aren't sure if their escrow pays it or if they're supposed to pay it, so. The, um, the reminder kind of delinquent notices do a good job of reminding folks that, that there are taxes paid. Down there at the bottom, the last thing I included in the chat was our total taxes and monies received. And this includes, oops, that's supposed to be our state credits, not outstate credits. So that's the backfill money. We're at $89,812,000 received so far for the year. So those are some folks who like to pay their full year right, right at the start and get that full year paid off. And those are some monies from the state for our backfill dollars. So that for the year, we're actually with the, with the credits and the people who have paid full, their full amount thus far. We've received 53.5% of our total property taxes for the year already. So, um, collection wise, we are doing really good. We'll send those notices out today, and hopefully in the next few weeks, we'll get a lot of the outstanding paid down. On 10/15, we do our, we do our disbursements to all the other taxing entities, the cities, the schools, the hospitals, et cetera. So we will not hold that money for long. It will be out, out to the areas that need it coming on the 15th of October. So, any questions?
Ted, of the amount still outstanding, that 2.5 million, okay? What rough percentage again is that of Story County? I mean, how much is, is Story County?
Uh, the county would get, I think, about 22% of that.
Okay, thank you.
Different, different, I mean, I can't give you the exact number without going back to the system, and I don't have it pulled up, I'm sorry, because different, different taxing districts, the county retains different portions of different taxing districts. But about 21, 22% of that would be a pretty easy calculation to come up with a rough estimate of what's, what percentage of that 2.5 million is owed to Story County specifically.
Like about, just roughly $564,000, and I understand that because that's like Lisa Markley when you ask her about the tip revenues or whatever, right? I mean, it's very specific according to tax difference. So thank you, though. That's good to know. Congratulations on 96% collecting.
Yeah, yeah, it's been an interesting tax collection month. Probably be the first and last time that we hit the 30th of September and we don't have a line at our door, so.
So Ted, I do have one question.
Sure.
Do you know at this time last year, what percentage we have collected? I mean, this is exact date or say the end of, say, October 1st?
I do not know. I know that last October, we sent about 1,500 delinquent notices. In October, we're not required by code to send out those notices, but we feel like it definitely pays off to do it. A little nudge is all a lot of people need to be reminded that they need to pay those, and, and we prefer to do that now so that they don't hit. By code, we're required to send them out in November. So just spending a, some time in our office, printing and stuffing the envelopes and paying for postage, really, I think, pays off for the county to, to kind of, I guess, do good by their property owners to try to remind them as quick as possible so they didn't get, don't get hit with the second month of delinquent charges.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I'm going to guess it was right around a similar number.
You said 1,600, you say you have delinquent parcels, and last year, this time, you sent out 1,500 notices, so that's pretty close.
Yeah, I think it's real close.
Okay, well, that's good news. Thank you for the report. Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys.
Upcoming agenda items? Anything?
Just had, you've seen the communication. I asked Sandra King about next week, so if we could start the discussion about what we might do with the Cares money possibility. So that's what I received.
Okay, anything else? Okay, we may have something back from tomorrow's CCMT meeting, and I did get an email back from Dr. Passion, said yes during the Public Health Director's discussion this afternoon that they would talk about the IDPH guidance. So that might give us some more information too. Supervisor Higgins, did you have anything?
Nothing to go on the agenda, I guess, at this particular time.
I guess, you did, maybe you see the email, the request to waive on some taxes, there's some property. And so, Lincoln Way, on West Dix, as you know, you see from our course one, it was to Brian Tracy, it was for something for a sports nonprofit.
Yeah, I signed them out.
Yeah, I don't know. It'll be up to Ethan and Sandra, whenever they put it together to break to us. But I gave you.
Yeah, but you emailed it out on Friday.
Right, on Friday.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that may be.
Then we'll go to public forum number two, comments from the public on items not on this agenda. Board may not take any action due to the open meetings law, but might do so in a future meeting. Does anybody, so open public forum number two. Does anybody on the phone here have any comments? From this call, excuse me. Anything in the chat, Leanne? Okay. Hearing nothing, I'll close public forum number two, and we'll go to liaison assignments committee meeting updates and announcements from the supervisors. Who would like to start?
I can say I've got the Board of Health meeting this afternoon, so if folks are listening, I want you per take. It will be via Zoom, so you can zoom, look at the kind of website for the agenda or if you're here in the building. You can see it at that point. I have a CCMT meeting tomorrow. Thursday, as long as it doesn't conflict with my time at the front desk, I was looking at my calendar, there's a Chapter Solutions team, kind of a business chapter meeting I'm going to try to zoom into. And then Friday, I know we have Jerry's farewell, to just add on to that, and I have a de-cap meeting on Friday. And then Monday, I do have a boost meeting Monday evening.
I've got the CCMT, just like you do, Lisa. I'm going to try and listen in, or at least for a couple hours to the Public Health, just to see what's happening there. And the Ames Economic Development Commission's exec meeting is on Friday morning at 7:00 AM. That's it for me.
I think jurisdiction.
Jurisdictional.
Just realized I always forget that as well.
I know, it's just, it's still standard on the agenda.
Yeah.
Well, and I guess the only, as far as the various committees or whatever, so just to let you know that demand has picked up with Firdip, you know, all these people are moving around, and they brought back two part-time drivers already, so, continuing to grow quickly.
Okay, um, CCMT, Story County College Access Network Leadership Team tomorrow. Thursday, jurisdictional insecurities. Working on some vendor selection, emergency management on Friday, it looks like, and Monday, Conservation Board at 5:30, and perhaps the Oakwood Task Force in the morning, so. Got lots more meetings coming up. Okay, that's all I got. Is there? Anything else? No, no, I entertain motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Treppen, Pedden.
Hi.
Wilson.
Hi.
Merkin. I, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.